Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna start the planning commission meeting of November 29th. Can we have a roll call to order and a roll call, please?
Yes, Bella, I'm sorry, Bela, did I say it right?
Present.
Got it.
Kelly?
Here.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Newton is absent, and Chair Swift?
Here, thank you. Approval of the agenda, does anyone have changes to the agenda? If not, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Bella, I'm sorry, Bela. It's gonna take me a while.
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Chair Swift?
Yes. Meeting protocol, the chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments on non-agenda items, anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission on matters not on tonight's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, must do so by email, in person, or via Zoom. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the Planning Commission Chair. Conduct, all interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email, state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at Lynda Neal at townofFairfax.org to be entered in the record. There's no items on the consent calendar, so we're gonna open time for public expression. Does anyone have comments they want to make on items that are not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Chair. Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax. December is the month that Fairfax, by way of the Town Council, decides on the building codes applicable, which building codes they elect to make part of the town code. I'm here to mention that this, the time is running out. In order to put Appendix D, which is fire apparatus access to new developments, which include any home without proper, in particular, Section D 106 for multifamily homes and D 107 for single-family homes. Any development which adds more than 30 homes to a to a, to an area, to a neighborhood, must have two ways in and out, two ways for fire equipment to get in and out. San Rafael does this. Novato does this. Ronard Park does this. Fairfax probably never imagined that we would have to put up 488 units in the next eight years. So we don't have it, but it's about time we did this. This is essential for the fire safety of our community in our one-way-out neighborhoods, which was mapped now for several years. And I would have to say through the, through the expertise which our town relies on of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, to make 2024 the year where we adopt Appendix D of the California Fire Code into the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code. Each jurisdiction does some modification to this in order to adapt it for their specific instances. In our, in Fairfax, we have a unique instance where we have windy roads, very narrow, many of them have fuel right up to the road. And we should consider making the two ways of access from the entire distance of the fire station to the property being developed. We know where our fire station is. Every time a building permit is issued, we know where the property being developed is. So make it such that we know that we can keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commission. Michael McIntosh. In the past, this commission was an integral and important cog in the development of guidelines that represent the majority while protecting the minority. Those guidelines carefully crafted a path that allowed everyone's input to ensure a safe place we could all call home. Now I see how this commission is usurped of its wisdom and guidance by the Town Council. Is that where you want to be? This commission is more than just a stepping stone to the Town Council. The Town Council sees your input not as guidance, but as checking the box. It is my opinion that few have allocated the time necessary to read the entirety of the draft EIR and comments. This document sets forth the anticipated path forward for the future of our town. The completed EIR will be cited and held as a reference on how to proceed and what is allowed. The reason we, as a state, have runway inflation, housing we cannot afford, pummeling taxes, crumbling infrastructure, and what appears as politicians who do not represent us? It's because our elected and appointed officials subordinate their duties to consultants. What started as a small transgression has led to a place that is divisive and not inclusive. Consultants have their place, but not to decide for you. It is incumbent that the suggestions, design, decision, and the ultimate implementation comes from you. You are appointed to represent us. We did not appoint the paid consultants who live elsewhere. Do they push for these same draconian changes in their communities? A community representative, appointed or elected, must represent the voice of the majority while being very cognizant to protect the voice of the minority. Our representatives come from our community. We choose you as a collective voice that we think will represent us, not subordinate all decisions to consultants that are not from the community. Your agenda should be to protect your community and guide it to a future that allows us all to live here. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor to deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. I cite the above from the first clause of our 14th Amendment. Please use your voice to represent your constituents. You're not here to check the box or blindly agree with an out-of-town consultant who will be here today and somewhere else tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public on items not before us? Any on Zoom?
I see no hands online, Chair.
Thank you. So I will close open time for public expression, and we'll go on to the hearing items. And the first one is 34 Lima Road. Can we have the staff report, please?
Okay, so the project would renovate the entire approximately 1,600-square-foot interior of the house, reconstruct the previously heavily modified back of the house, build a new approximately 300-square-foot single-car garage in the southeastern corner of the property, and create a second driveway entrance and parking space at the front of the property. Other proposed improvements consist of voluntary structural upgrades to the foundation and shear, and electrical upgrades throughout the structure. The property owner was initially issued a building permit to renovate approximately 640 square feet of the building's interior and construct a single-car carport at the front of the property. However, after beginning the initial permitted renovation, the property owner encountered substantial dry rot, water damage, and a very old substandard electrical system, and subsequently gutted the interior and demolished the heavily modified back of the building. At that point, the building department stopped the renovation project as it constituted a 50% remodel and required approval of a design review permit from the Planning Commission. APD Preservation conducted a historic resource evaluation of the house and determined it qualifies as a historic resource under the California Environmental Quality Act for its association with a significant event, which is the early 20th century development of Fairfax following the arrival of the railroad, and for being architecturally distinctive. According to APD Preservation, the house is one of Fairfax's few surviving examples of folk Victorian residential architecture that was common from the 1870s to 1910. The architectural historian and preservation planner who conducted the evaluation exceeds the standards for architectural historian, as defined by the Federal Code of Regulations, and is listed in the California Historical Resources Information System as a consultant qualified to work in the fields of architectural history and history. According to the Historic Resource Evaluation, the exterior of the house has undergone some changes, though the footprint remains the same. The floor of the front porch, front steps, and the front door were replaced. The back of the house was heavily modified by enclosing a back porch, removing the original rear steps and replacing and relocating the back door and all rear windows, which, according to the evaluation, compromised the integrity, the historic integrity of that part of the building. There was, there was an approximately 300-square-foot single-car garage located in the northeastern quarter behind the house, and that was demolished. APD Preservation also evaluated the project's consistency with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties and found that the project was consistent with those standards and would have no significant impact on the historic house. The project requires a design review permit for the renovation and remodeling work. It combines side yard setback variance because the proposed garage would encroach approximately three feet into the 15-foot required combined side yard setback. It requires a front yard setback variance for the garage because the southwestern corner would encroach into the 10-foot front yard setback required for accessory buildings, and it requires the second driveway entrance variance. So findings can be made. For the requested entitlements, the project would comply with the design review criteria in the town code. It would not adversely affect those elements of the house that render it historically significant. It would not impact character-defining features, materials, finishes, or construction techniques. Deteriorated features would be repaired to visually emulate their original design. The proposed modifications at the rear of the house impact a nonhistoric heavily modified section and would not detract from the historic block of the main house. The proposed freestanding garage is compatible with the historic house. It would not visually detract from the house and could be removed at a future date with no impact to the house. All the proposed materials of the house and the garage would match each other, as well as the character of the adjacent house at 28 Lima Road. The proposed garage would not be as tall as the house. It's modest in size and would not block the view of the front of the house from the street. The approximately 123-year-old house and the sighting of it on the irregular property shape are the special circumstances that warrant granting the requested combined side yard setback variance and the minimum front yard setback variance for accessory buildings. Locating the garage outside of the combined yard setback would result in the garage being located partially in front of the historic house, which would detract from those features that visually convey the historic character. Locating the garage outside the minimum front yard setback required for accessory buildings would require the removal of a portion of the southeast corner of the historic front porch, which would destroy the integrity of the historic resource. There are other properties in the vicinity that have parking structures within the combined side yard setback and the minimum front yard setback required for accessory buildings, so the variance would not be a grant of special privilege. The strict application of the setback regulations would result in unreasonable hardship for the owner and would not be in the public interest. The location of the garage would not be a safety hazard. The irregular angle of the front property boundary, and there's a mature palm tree in the front yard, and the location of the approximately 123-year-old historic house or the circumstances applying to the property, which generally do not apply to other properties in the same area, and warrant the approval of the second driveway entrance. The second driveway entrance allows the parking to be concentrated in one area, which maximizes the private outdoor space for the property and allows the palm tree to remain while bringing the site into compliance with minimum, the minimum parking requirements of the town code. The two driveway entrances would not block pedestrian access over the sidewalk area and would not impact vehicular access or pedestrian and vehicular visibility for those using the Lima Road right-of-way. So that concludes the staff report. And the recommendation is to approve the application by grant, by adopting the Resolution 2023-31 that contain, that contains the findings and conditions of project approval.
Thank you. Do any planning commissioners have questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come up and make any comments that they wish to make concerning the application? And then have, be up there if the commission has any questions for you?
Good evening. I'm Valerie Soriano with Mahaney Architect and Design. And we just wanted to add to the staff report, give a little bit of history about the proposed restoration work on the property as well. The property at 34 Lima is nostalgic for a client who is actually a Fairfax native and has a connection to this neighborhood where she grew up. The residence was purchased with the intent to restore the existing historic folk Victorian details while updating the interior to include modern conveniences with a new kitchen and updated bathrooms. The initial plans were permitted for, as Kara said, an interior remodel under 50%. However, when demo began, extensive dry rot and structural damage was revealed and requiring repair in order to maintain the integrity of the structure in the future. The new proposed renovation now includes 100% of the interior structure, including electrical, sorry, elective structural upgrades and the garage. Triggering design review. The existing building footprint will not be changed. It'll remain as is. We're pleased to be here tonight and having this discussion and hope that the commission, that you all will be able to see that the intent for this property is to honor the Fairfax Design Guidelines and to restore the historic significance of the existing structure. And we hope that you are able to approve the additional proposed restoration work so that the construction can be restarted before inclement winter weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, if you want to push that button, thank you. Open it up to anyone that has public comments on this application. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to it? Come on up.
Commission, it's actually nice to hear staff support a project that seems very reasonable. And I hope that the commission will also see as that because it sets a good example for people to come forth and bring an idea to you to say, hey, I want to do something so you can help them to comply. And so I really want to compliment Cara, who I've not heard speak before on a subject like this. I really think she did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments on this application? Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Thank you. So I'm gonna close public comment on the application and bring it back to commission for deliberation and/or a motion.
It's nicely done. Fits perfectly. I looked at all the plans. I would be willing to make a motion, but maybe other commissioners have comments.
Any other comments?
I'd like to just make a quick comment that I appreciate the project. I'm familiar with the house. It's an ambitious project for such a subtle little house. And I'm really happy that, I think it's going to be an attribute to the town. So I'm in support of the project.
With that, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-31. Resolution Fairfax Planning Commission approving the application number 23-32 for the design review permits for the 50% remodel of the historic house and the combined side yard setback variance and a minimum front yard setback for the construction of a new single-car garage and a variance to allow for two-way driveway entrance at 34 Lima Road.
Have a second?
A second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Bela?
Yeah, yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. So all eyes, thank you, and I appreciate the work you're going to be doing on this property to maintain its historical appearance. Thank you. But for ready, we're gonna have our second agenda item. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Swift, Planning Commission. I'm going to start it off, and then I'll hand it over to our consultant to go through the presentation. And with me is Andrew Hill.
Could you speak up just?
Sure.
Thanks, that's better.
Close my face. I'll turn it over to Andrew Hill in a minute. We also have Janet Coulson here from the City Attorney's Office in case we have any legal questions. So what we are doing tonight is conducting a public hearing to consider a recommendation to the city council, or a town council, excuse me. Old habits die hard. The town council of two resolutions. The first would be to recommend that they certify in an environmental impact report. And then the second would be to recommend that they adopt the 2023 to 31 housing elements. You received in your packet a draft from, that we sent to HCD in May. And we have since addressed all of HCD's comments, which was the reason why you got a supplemental staff report last night, which kind of gives you a page-by-page breakdown of how we are responding to all of HCD's comments. Then those are in redline form, which was also provided. And that is the version that we will be providing to HCD to demonstrate how we are addressing their, their letter that they mailed to us on August 11th. So with that, I will turn it over to Andrew to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, planning commissioners. So maybe you can go to the next slide. We've hit that. Yeah, so in my presentation tonight, I wanted to provide an overview of the housing element.
And can you speak up as well, or just move it closer?
Maybe just move it closer.
Yeah, thanks.
There we go. So in my presentation tonight, I wanted to provide an overview of the housing element, including touching on some of the legal requirements, as well as the sites and the strategies that are included in it. And also to provide an overview of the EIR, touching on the purpose of that document, the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, the EIR process itself, as well as a summary of the impacts and mitigations that were found, and a summary of the public comments that were received on the draft EIR. And then we recommend that the commission conduct a public hearing and deliberate and make recommendations. So the objectives of our meeting tonight are really to, to, to provide that overview of the housing element in the EIR, to hear public comments, and then to receive recommendations from the Planning Commission, first on certification of the EIR, and then a recommendation on adoption of the housing element. So let me start with a little background context on some of the legal requirements and the content of the housing element, particularly maybe for community members who are watching or listening at home. So the housing element is one of eight state-mandated elements of the general plan, along with land use, circulation, conservation, open space, safety, and noise. It's essentially the town's plan for addressing local housing needs. And by law, it must be updated every eight years to plan for the coming eight-year cycle. Unlike other elements of the general plan, it's, it's subject to numerous specific legal requirements, including that the California Department of Housing and Community Development review and certify the element as complete and compliant with state law. So, next slide. So the state law requires certain core components of the housing element. Chief among these is an inventory of sites that are available for housing, and this is typically shown on a, on a map and summarized in a table that also shows projections of the realistic capacity for housing on each of the sites identified. The housing element also has to include a series of background analyses. First, it needs to include an assessment of housing needs for groups like seniors, the disabled, or female-headed households. And this is based on a review of census data and other information. Then it needs to include an assessment of environmental regulatory and market-based constraints to housing development. And then finally, it needs to include an analysis of any impediments to fair access to housing opportunities for disadvantaged groups like low-income households or linguistic and ethnic minorities. And then based on all of that analysis, it, it needs to include a program of implementing actions that will address those special housing needs, those housing constraints, and any fair housing issues that were identified. So a term that you hear a lot in the context of the housing element is RENA. It stands for the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Essentially, it is the number of new housing units that the town needs to plan for in the coming eight-year cycle. It's important to note that the requirement for the town is not to build those units, but to make sure that the zoning map has the capacity to accommodate those units. And so for the 2023 to 31 planning period, the town's assessed share of the regional housing needs allocation is 490, 90 units, as shown on this chart. And that is broken down by various income categories. The income categories are based on the Marin County area-wide median income. And so households making less than 80% of that area median income are considered low income. And households making more than 120% of the area median income are considered above moderate. So the town is legally required to adopt a housing element that complies with state law. Failure to do so can result in lawsuits, fines, and penalties. This may include the loss of funding for transportation improvements and other state-funded projects. It could include court-imposed fees of, fees and fines up to $600,000 per month. And it may lead to lawsuits that can result in the loss of local control over zoning and, and planning approvals, or even court-mandated compliance, which could include the completion of the housing element by a, by a court appointee. So the revised draft housing element that was published yesterday includes an inventory of sites that's almost identical to the one in the public review draft with just a few minor modifications. The first modification was made in response to comments from HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And it regards some of the sites in the proposed workforce housing overlay. They were reassigned from low income to moderate income because of a certain criteria that needed to be met. And the second change was that subsequent to publication of the, of the public review draft housing element, the wall property was sold and the Miranda Heights Builders Remedy the wall property was sold and the Miranda Heights Builders Remedy project is not moving forward. That site isn't needed to to meet the town's RENA obligations, and so it's been removed as well. And that results in a small drop in above moderate units. But overall, the inventory still has a capacity for 598 new homes, which is sufficient to meet the town's RENA obligations at all income levels with a buffer. And that buffer is important to ensure that there's adequate capacity if any of the sites don't develop with the number of units that's anticipated in the inventory. And that's so that the the town can make sure that it's adequate capacity at all times and comply with the no-net-loss provisions in state law. So let me break down the inventory for you. It projects a capacity for 57 new single-family homes on vacant residentially-zoned properties throughout Fairfax. This includes 11 pipeline projects that are currently under review or have been approved but not yet constructed and 46 homes on vacant lots with single-family zoning. Additionally, the action plan, which is in chapter four of the of the housing element, contains a program under which the town will develop and adopt standards to permit clustered, single-family and accessory dwelling units on large sites with appropriate access and the potential availability of utilities. The intent with these standards would be to allow for small clustered housing on relatively flatter portions of those sites while preserving the majority of the area as open space and protecting ridgelines and views. As you know from the study session on the on these standards, the element does not propose to change the the land use designation of these sites, nor does it propose to increase the permitted density on any of the of the large of the large sites. The standards would simply give the property owner the option to cluster those units. So the inventory also assumes the development of pipeline projects, as I mentioned, those those 11 single-family homes that have have been approved but are not yet constructed. It also includes eight apartment units on the northern portion of the Fairfax Market site. The owner is preparing to submit an application for that process project now. And it assumes 175 units on the School Street Plaza site, including 140 market rate units and 35 affordable units. The owners is talking to real estate developers to develop the project, and a program has been included in the action plan to facilitate development at that site. Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units can be counted towards the RENA obligations. And the the projections are not done in a site-specific manner. Rather, the state has established a methodology whereby we look at the town's permitting record. So since 2018, how many permits, construction permits for ADUs and junior ADUs have been issued on an annual basis? And then we can project that number forward for each eight, for each of the eight years in the planning cycle. And so since 2018, the the town has has permitted on average 11 units per year. And so that's the minimum number that we can project each year. But with a suite of programs to promote and incentivize a production of ADUs and junior ADUs, we can project more than that. So the element includes those programs in chapter four. And and on that basis, we're projecting 20 ADUs and junior ADUs per year for a total of 160 over the planning period. The inventory also projects capacity for 371 new multifamily units on underutilized commercial, commercial properties, primarily in the town center area along Sir Francis Drake and Broadway. These sites are all in locations with good access to transit, shops and services as required under state law. And new state laws like AB 2011 and SB 6 that came into force earlier this year allow for housing development on commercial and office sites subject to objective design standards set by the state. Program 2A in the housing element would create a new workforce housing overlay applicable to to these sites that gives owners the option to either redevelop commercial uses consistent with the base zoning currently in place, or if they like to add infill multifamily housing if they choose. And so new development, new housing development would be subject to the objective design and development standards that are being prepared with community input this this fall. And additionally, because several of the commercial sites were included on prior inventories, the zoning for these sites must be updated to allow for housing by right if the owners propose to make at least 20% of the new units affordable to lower-income households. And so a program to that effect has also been included in in chapter four of the element. And then finally, two adjacent town-owned sites with residential zoning have been identified as candidates for redevelopment with workforce housing. And through a program in the housing element, the town would partner with a nonprofit developer to construct 10 units that would be affordable to restaurant employees, service workers, teachers, public servants and others working in Fairfax who make less than 80% of the area median income. The two sites have a total area of 0.5 acres and there would be objective standards developed as part of the process to apply to those sites to integrate housing onto them. And then finally, chapter four, as I've mentioned, contains the action plan with 43 programs that to implement the findings of the of the analysis and to promote development on the sites. It's organized around five goals that correspond to the requirements of state law and some of the particular challenges that Fairfax faces. The goals are listed on the screen and they involve increasing the range of housing options in town, addressing regulatory process and market-based barriers to housing construction, promoting suitable and affordable housing for special needs populations, fostering equal opportunity to equal access to housing opportunities and monitoring the effectiveness of the programs. So that's a very quick overview of the housing element. Let me talk now about the the EIR. So adopting the housing element and the then the related zoning amendments is a discretionary action that triggers the need for environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So implementation of the housing element could result in one or more significant environmental impacts. And so an environmental impact report has been prepared. The purpose of the EIR is to inform public and the decision-makers about potential impacts of implementing the the project. It's also to identify ways to reduce or avoid those impacts and to describe reasonable alternatives to the project that could reduce or avoid those impacts. The housing element EIR is a program EIR, which means that it analyzes the impacts of the policies of of the policies and regulations. Subsequent projects may need to do additional environmental review to address any site-specific impacts associated with with their individual development. And so CEQA identifies a range of resource categories that need to be included in the EIR. They're listed on the screen. There's about 16 of them. They cover everything from aesthetics and visual resources to air quality, biological resources, cultural and historic resources, you know, hazards, hydrology, everything and transportation, wildfire, utilities, et cetera. All of these topics were addressed in the in the draft EIR. This is a snapshot of the overall CEQA process. We started earlier earlier this year, releasing first a notice of preparation to let community members, interested parties and public agencies, to make them aware that that an environmental impact report would be prepared. There was a 30-day scoping period when we collected comments on the on the range of issues that should be studied in the EIR and potential solutions as well as alternatives that that should be studied. Following the close of that comment period, we summarized the comments and we went ahead and conducted the environmental review. And then the draft EIR was released in in September. It was on the street for 45 days, a public comment. That public comment period closed on November 13th. And since then, we've been reviewing those comments and preparing formal responses. The final EIR will be released tomorrow, but I can give you overview tonight of some of the comments were raised and and how they're being addressed in the final EIR. And so that brings us to today, which is the the first of two public hearings on the on the EIR. And the end of the process will be with certification. And so the the draft EIR found that impacts related to a majority of the resource categories would be less than significant. It did find that there would be significant impacts related to air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources and GHG emissions. But that these seven impacts related to these categories could be reduced to a less than significant level with with mitigation measures. Two impacts, however, were found to to be significant and unavoidable, even after the implementation of all available mitigation measures. Those significant and unavoidable impacts relate to GHG emissions and transportation. It's not uncommon for a long-range plan with the scope and scale of a housing element to result in significant and unavoidable impacts. And CEQA provides a process and a path to move forward in cases like this. The town can adopt a statement of overriding considerations that acknowledges the significant and unavoidable impacts, but identifies overriding considerations such as the local housing needs or the requirements of compliance with state law. So the first significant and unavoidable impact relates to vehicle miles traveled. The housing element would result in a 10% reduction in vehicle miles traveled per capita by 2031, which is a significant improvement over existing conditions, but it's not enough to meet the 15% per capita reduction target. The there are a variety of, next slide, please. There are a variety of potential mitigation measures available to reduce VMT. They they include promoting infill development, implementing parking demand management strategies, employment-based transportation demand management, non-motorized, promoting non-motorized transportation incentives and enhancing transit service. The draft housing element incorporates infill development and parking management strategies, and that helped to significantly reduce the per capita VMC, VMT, as I said, by about 10%. The issue is that Fairfax does not have a lot of major employers, and so implementing TDM measures would not be particularly effective here. And then Fairfax doesn't have jurisdiction over transit services, and so isn't doesn't have the authority necessarily to to enhance transit service. And so as a result, even after implementation of all available mitigation measures, and even though we got a 10% per capita reduction, it isn't quite enough to get to the 15% threshold and the the mitigation and the impact remains significant and unavoidable. So the second significant and unavoidable impact has to do with greenhouse gas emissions. Now Fairfax has adopted a climate action plan that establishes a target of net zero emissions by 2030. And then the state has enacted some regulations around to establish a target of carbon neutrality by 2045. Now, the draft EIR found that compliance with measures in the town code would help ensure that emissions from area and energy, energy sources would not conflict with these targets. However, emissions, particularly because of the vehicle miles traveled, would exceed the statewide and local targets for both 2030 and 2050. Next slide. The mitigation measure that was proposed to address this issue involves updating the town's climate action plan to identify new measures to to bring projected emissions down below those targets. And however, the cap hasn't been updated at this point. And we can't say with certainty that measures will be identified to to bring the emissions below the targets. And so conservatively, we've found that there's a significant unavoidable impact until that until that happens. The next slide. So the the draft EIR, as I mentioned, was available for a period of 45 days, actually a little bit more, from September 26 through November 13. During that time, a total of 14 comment letters were received from public agencies and members of the members of the community. Those 14 letters had about 167 unique comments. Each of those comments has been parsed out and we're responding to them one by one. That will be available in the in the final EIR. But some of the key themes that were raised in the comments have to do with biological resources, VMT and transportation, the settlement agreement for the 615 Oak Manor site, priority conservation areas and hillside development, the Marin Town and Country Club site, and as well as landslide risk and fire and emergency evacuation. So let me talk a little bit about each of those topics to give you a flavor for the comments and and what the responses will be. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife had sent a letter requesting a checklist for subsequent project review and also requesting some additional mitigation measures for northern spotted owl and bat species of concern. And so we've prepared that checklist and it'll be incorporated into the into the final EIR. And then mitigation measures Bio 1 and Bio 3 from the draft EIR already addressed these impacts to a certain extent. But we've refined them to strengthen and clearly address the the impacts related to northern spotted owls and bat species of concern in response to the the agency letter. Caltrans also submitted submitted a letter. They requested consideration of additional mitigation measures for VMT. As I mentioned, the draft EIR already considered a variety of potential strategies, including infill development, parking management, employment-based TDM, all the all the topics I talked about. And as I mentioned, everything feasible has already been implemented and there isn't anything, anything, any further feasible mitigation measures that could be done. And so that's that's the response to Caltrans. 615 Oak Manor, several commenters raised a question whether development is feasible on the site given a settlement agreement that relates to a 1991 lawsuit. And the town attorney has prepared a response for this. But essentially, the the settlement agreement established a term of two years that lasted until September 1990 for phases A to C of the project and then an additional three-year term that would extend to 1993 for phase D of the project pursuant to the 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 State Subdivision Map Act. Now, the town would have had to approve a tentative vesting map within those terms had an application been received. But no application was received and the town has no evidence that a town ordinance extending the term was was ever passed. And so therefore, it's the it's the opinion of the town attorney that that the the terms of the of the agreement have lapsed and development would be possible. Open space and priority conservation areas. Several commenters asserted that development would not be consistent with the town's open space regulations or that they would conflict with the priority conservation area designation. So first of all, as I mentioned in the overview of the housing element, the general plan, land use and zoning that applies to, and we're talking here about mostly the the larger sites in in outlying areas, sort of on hillside areas of of town. The general plan and land use and zoning that's applicable to those sites do today, does today permit housing? And the program 2D in the in the housing element, which would provide those standards to permit owners, should they choose to do it, to to cluster that permitted development on relatively flatter areas of the site without increasing the 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 number of permitted units that's permitted in the base density. That's what they would do. The requirements, as you know, through from the study session, would also require that larger areas, at least 75% of the remainder of the site be preserved as open space and their standards included to to protect view sheds and and ridgelines as well. So with respect to the priority conservation areas, Plan Bay Area 2050 identifies three priority conservations in the vicinity of Fairfax, and these are shown on the on the map at the right of the screen. But it doesn't define boundaries for them. As shown on the map, they're just indicated by points. And there there none of, there are no housing sites in the element that are close into any of these dots that are identified in in Plan Bay Area. However, even if the if there were sites in a within a priority conservation area, that designation does not restrict land use or development capacity because that authority resides with with the local jurisdiction, i.e. with the town. And as we mentioned, the sites identified under Town General Plan Land Use and Zoning, housing is permitted there. So there is no conflict with the priority conservation area designation either. So there is no conflict uh, with the priority conservation area designation either. Next slide. Um, the, several commentators also advocated for housing at the Marin, Marin Town, um, Town and Country Club site. Um, and uh, they suggested that the, the mixed-use development alternative, um, which involves, which is a scenario under which development would happen at the MTC site, site should be identified as the environmentally superior alternative in the IR. Um, in fact, in the alternatives chapter of the IR, the no-project alternative is identified as uh, the environmentally superior alternative because it would have the, the fewest impacts. The no-project um, alternative is, is a scenario under which the, the town does not adopt a new housing element, but, but sticks with the old one. However, that would not comply with state law, um, and therefore it wouldn't achieve the basic objectives of the, of the project, which are to get certification from the state and comply with state law. And so that, um, even though it's the environmentally superior alternative, the no-project alternative was found to be infeasible. Um, and then uh, according to CEQA, if, if the, nope, if the environmentally superior uh, alt- alternative is infeasible, you need to find another one. And so the sec- the second best alternative in terms of environmental impacts was in fact, this mixed-use development alternative, the one that envisioned, um, it, it looked at impacts if the Marin Town and Country Club site um, were to be developed with housing. So that was the, the second best choice. However, that um, development of housing on that site would require a vote of the people because uh, it doesn't have zoning that allows um, uh, housing today. And um, it can't be said with certainty that that vote would pass um, and that housing could be constructed on the site within the eight-year planning, planning period. And if that can't happen, then the basic objective of the project to achieve state certification and, and to have the housing units built can't be met. And so um, this alternative was also found to be infeasible. Um, so that's a long way of saying, um, the, the IR did in fact um, identify um, the mixed-use development alternative as environmentally su- as superior, but it found it to be infeasible because it wouldn't meet the project objectives. Um, and then uh, several commenters also were concerned about landslide risk and its um, its impacts to uh, existing development. The draft DIR um, documents in, in a fair bit of detail how compliance with uh, existing regulations such as the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System and other aspects of the town code in the general plan would reduce or avoid those impacts to the maximum extent, practicable, practicable. Um, and then there was also some comments about how uh, construction um, risk uh, uh, construction of housing might um, increase uh, wildfire risk or impact uh, evacuation safety. Um, and uh, the draft DIR, so the draft DIR notes that there are requirements in the town code that yeah, that for a preparation of a fire protection plan um, to um, uh, and also uh, compliance with the California um, Building Code and the Fire Code um, would, which would require the use of, the, the use of materials and um, te- techniques to minimize wildfire risk would be required with all new construction. Um, and then additionally, um, there's a, there's a, a robust um, framework for emergency preparedness and evacuation actions that's already in place uh, at the, at the county level. And um, uh, and that uh, that would help to um, minimize uh, impacts with respect to impeding uh, implementation of an emergency evacuation plan. I'd also point out that um, in the, in the next phase of the project in the new year, we will be working on the safety element, uh, which will be relying on some modeling that's been done by the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority um, that will look at uh, uh, emergency evacuation capacity and help to identify additional strategies um, to um, to augment that. Um, and so that'll be part of the safety element as well. But that was a quick overview of, of the content of the IR, the process, the legal requirements and, and the flavor for um, some of the comments that we've received. Um, and so finally, just wrapping up, I wanted to take a look, a look ahead uh, to the next steps. Um, we have our eyes on the um, January 31st deadline. Um, January 31st of this year was the statutory deadline for adopting the housing element. For a variety of reasons, the, the town didn't meet that deadline. And so this year, we've been very focused on um, on trying to catch up. Um, and because uh, the, the town has a legal requirement to adopt the housing element as quickly as possible. But then the, any zoning amendments needed to implement the housing element need to be done by January 31st of next year. Um, and so uh, in order to get there, um, we're hoping to uh, to have these hearings before the uh, the Planning Commission and then uh, the Town Council um, in December. And then um, to have a, have hearings on the implementing zoning, the related zoning amendments um, in uh, in, in January as well, so that everything can be completed um, by that January 31st, 2024 deadline.
Okay, so I think with that, this would be our recommended kind of procedure moving forward tonight would be to, first of all, get any, any clarifying questions from the Planning Commission. I'm going to talk right into this thing, so. And then, secondly, uh, uh, public testimony. I assume we have a lot of public testimony in the, in the audience and also on Zoom. Um, and then we could talk about each of the resolutions and recommend, potential recommendations to the Town Council. Um, in turn, starting with the uh, IR certification, which, which has to precede the housing elements. And then of course, then the recommendation to the Town Council on the general plan. And so anyway, that is how staff would recommend proceeding and the chair might agree with that or have other ideas, so.
So thank you for the presentation. Um, and before I forget, I would like to have this PowerPoint uploaded to the web, probably both in where we have all the housing documentation, but also if it could be added to the Planning Commission meeting for tonight. So it's included with the other documents we have. If that's feasible, make it easier for the public to see that.
I believe we can add, like, if you know how the meeting page is formatted, we have little buttons for the agenda and then the
Right.
So I think we can add a third button that would be presentation.
And that would be great for the public. In thinking about, you know, the process tonight, like you said, the IR needs to come before the housing element. And I know, um, you know, there's some overlap and questions and concerns between the two. But if staff could let me know if this is feasible, that we take each one separately so that we address the IR through the process of having the commission ask questions um, of staff, having the public comment and then going back to the commission on the resolution and then following that with the same process on the housing element. I think that would be simpler overall than mixing kind of apples and oranges.
So to clarify, you want to have two periods of public comment. You want to have the uh, start with the IR. Have kind of a public comment period on the IR, then kind of conclude that, then go to the second resolution on the housing element, then have a second public comment period on the housing element. Cause here I had it, cause some of the comments are kind of mixed up and they might be repetitive. So I had it just one public testimony, but it's, it's up to the, the chair and the planning commission's discretion on that, so.
How does the rest of the commission feel on that of breaking it up and just going through the process on the IR, then going through the process on the housing element?
My recommendation is that we just proceed with what Jeffrey has described. Try to get all the public comments at, at once. Otherwise, I think we're going to be here a long, long, long time.
We may be here a long time anyway, but that's okay. You know, that's the process.
And I think probably people are probably conflating some of the comments and concerns between IR and housing element. So it might be, as the sort of questions are sort of bundled in the presentation, it might be difficult to pull out. I mean, I can pull out some ones which are related to either document, but I don't know if everyone will be able to do that as easily.
Rest of the?
I have no opinion on what I have to hear.
Staff have a preference on that or?
Well, my preference is already on this, on this, my preference is on the slide. So just one pu- public testimony period. But, 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 but again, I, you know, it's, I would defer to the planning commission, so.
Then um, then what, from the planning commission perspective, as far as asking questions of staff, then are you going to think that we're going to ask questions both on the IR and the housing element at once? I mean, as one process?
No, no, I, I, I don't think so. I think you could, you could still ask clarifying questions. I just think that the, if, if there's any big clarifying questions at the beginning, like, you know, I think we may have already discussed it. Actually, I think we may have already done number one. And then the attorney wants to say something here.
Thank you. I apologize here. I see if you can hear me through this mask. Um, I think the intent was to have one hearing on the two because they do go together. There are two separate resolutions. They don't have to be two separate resolutions, except for the fact that if you had one resolution, you'd want to list the IR first before the housing element. So they could have been combined, but I think it's difficult to separate out some of the issues um, from the IR and the housing element. I think they are pretty much combined together. And as you can see, this presentation was, was kind of together as one. And I think your questions can go back and forth between the two. Public comment will certainly be on both of them. And so I think that um, it might be less confusing to try to make a hard line between the two documents because if somebody gets up to say something about, uh, turns out they're talking about the IR when we're talking about the housing element, we don't want to stop them and say, well, then we've already taken care of that. You see, we're, we're done with that. So I think it's better if you just, if you take it as a whole. There are two separate documents, two separate actions. But I think that it's better if you take it as a whole.
Okay, so with that, um, and I, then I will ask my questions both on the housing element and the IR. But I'm gonna leave those um, to after the rest of the commissioners have asked their questions of staff and then I will ask mine. So does anyone have questions of staff on either of those? Start at that end.
Excellent. Uh, thank you. Um, so yeah, I had a, a few clarifying questions. Starting, I guess, at the beginning of the presentation, you noted how um, you know, in coming up with the sites inventory and our buffer, um, and the process overall, that the town is not mandated and required to actually be responsible for building the units, but it is required for putting plans and policies in place to show that to HCD that we've zoned capacity for those units. Makes sense. Um, but then when speaking about the buffer specifically, you s- you say that it exists in case that some sites aren't developed so that we can show out, well, we're still above the 490 units. Um, what, where, what is the, the difference there between there being some need to, to accommodate sites that don't have developed without actually actually being required to develop them?
Yeah, um, so as I say, the, the requirement under state law is for the town to make sure that the zoning map has, always has the capacity to accommodate its, its arena allocation. Um, and uh, that's because, you know, ultimately, the decision to develop is up to the property owner, you know, uh, depending on market forces and their, and their own will. The town can't control that kind of thing. It's only, what the town can control is what's in the zoning and, and also, um, you know, what they can do, what the town can do to control fees and costs and, and otherwise incentivize development. So we have put together, identified the, what we think are the most viable sites. And we've put together uh, projections of what we think the realistic capacity is based on a survey of other comparable sites in, in Marin County. Um, however, for example, if a, if we, we think that uh, sites downtown will develop with five units or 10 units, but actually the, the, the property owner um, comes in with an application and wants to develop only two or four, you know, significantly less than the number that we projected, um, then uh, you see, um, if we just zoned for 490, the first project that came forward with less than the number we'd assumed would mean that the town is, that the zoning map no longer has the capacity to, to accommodate those 490 units. And then the town would need to scramble to, to rezone another site to make, to get the, to get it back up to the 490 level. And so the reason we have a buffer is in case projects, as projects come forward, they're proposing less than the number, um, you know, that uh, that we've assumed. Uh, the town has the ability uh, to, to, the flexibility to accommodate um, those different development proposals. And that's, that's the importance of the buffer.
Got it. Thanks. Uh, so just to clarify, the buffer isn't for sites that don't develop because those don't affect the buffer at all. It's for sites that do develop under the number that we have included in the site.
Exactly correct, yep.
Uh, thanks. Um, when discussing the IR, I guess the main impact consequence uh, and how you, I, how you sort of prioritize what we're talking about is the um, category of significant and unavoidable impacts. What is the, you know, we identified them in the report that they exist. What is the consequence on the process that they exist, other than we identify them?
Yeah, I think that one of the purposes of CEQA, as I, I tried to hit on in the, in the presentation, the purpose, one of the main purposes of the IR is as a public information tool. Uh, it's to, to make, to disclose uh, what are the potential environmental impacts of moving forward with this project in our, in our case, adopting the town, adopting the housing element and, and the zoning. Um, and so uh, the significant and unavoidable is a, is a way of, is a, is public information. You know, it's saying, um, we've done this analysis and for example, you know, the uh, even though the housing element is promoting infill development and doing other things and is resulting in a 10% drop in per capita VMT, that's still not enough um, to get uh, to get below the 15% reduction threshold. And there are no other mitigation measures, um, and therefore it remains significant and unavoidable. So it's a, um, the uh, the purpose of the document is a public information tool so that decision makers like the planning commission or the town council have that, that information available as they make the decision on whether to move forward with the, the housing element or not. Um, if that answers your question.
Yep, um, that does. Thanks. And then, um, you know, because the question has come up a few times and I assume we're going to get um, public comment on it. So I was hoping to understand again specifically with the um, cluster development um, in the, in the scenic ridgeways and low-impact development. So my understanding is that the density hasn't changed. So if somebody has a parcel that they could develop 10 units on, they can still develop 10 units with or without these changes. With these changes, those 10 units can all be in a much smaller, flatter part of the parcel without having to have, you know, housing separation and 75% of the um, unit takes place. If we don't include that and for whatever reason, we are out of compliance with the housing element process with HCD, that stuck into my mind as a kind of obvious thing the state would do in terms of builders remedy mandating compliance, would they, could the state, if we don't have something that says you can develop this and have to have 75% of the uh, property remain open, could the state then come in and say, you can develop this and you don't even have to have 75% of the space take, is what sort, is that the sort of thing, the consequence that we get for being not in compliance? Other, you know, monetary fines, I understand, but um, in terms of mandating compliance, I, I just don't.
It, it might be. I think the, the thought process for that was, you know, there, there are these large properties that have been zoned for, for single-family development for a long time and they've never developed. And as I mentioned, one of the requirements of the housing alma- uh, element is that we do that constraints analysis. Um, and so uh, environmental constraints and the cost of development on those sites was identified as a constraint. And so the, the clustered um, zoning is a way of addressing that constraint. Um, because, so we've identified them as available and the town is also taking actions that's, that are available to, to it, to help um, uh, to help uh, with the feasibility of development on those sites, should the owners decide to pursue it. So that's more than, than a, than a consequence of, of being out of compliance. It came through, it, it emerged as a strategy for addressing constraints through the analysis that we did for the housing element.
Thanks. I guess the, and this is sort of an overall thing, cause I'm thinking in terms of the objective design standards we have because for certain types of developments, we can't enforce subjective design standards where there's building by right. Do we want to be over-inclusive in terms of strategies here because if we show that we're trying to allow for development with the protections we have, those are less likely to be a focus of state enforcement than something where we say, yeah, they're gonna try and avoid all development.
I think that's true. Yeah, it's a good faith effort.
And this is my, my last upfront question here. And, and it's further to that. Is there some sort of, you know, once we get past the housing element approvals, HCD approves it. Excellent. Kudos to us. What is the consequence of having all of these policies in here to, to, to sort of address this? Is there some sort of state follow-up that says, hey, are these policies implemented? I know there's check-ins in terms of overall compliance to make sure that zoning, we say we do, we actually do. But if, if people still, if we have this clustered housing development, we rezone, you know, to, to build workforce housing overlay and nobody's building it. Is there anything for them to do other than say, well, you did adopt the policy?
Yeah. So there is a requirement that, that the town submit an annual progress report. And there's a form in there and it goes through program by program. You, you'll see the, all the programs have dates on them, you know, target completion dates. And so each year, you'll, you know, the town staff will report out to HCD and say, these are, you know, here's, here's the progress that we've made. Here's where we are with these various programs. And so on an annual basis, that'll happen. And then for the next housing element cycle, you'll see there's an appendix to our housing element, which is about the, the progress made towards implementing the programs from the prior element. We'll have to, we'll have to do that for the sixth cycle as well. So HCD has beefed up their staff. They've got a, they've got a much larger employment or enforcement division that's, that's reviewing and, and checking. And I think if, if the town didn't really, really fail to make substantial progress in implementing those programs over years, there, there could be some enforcement actions from that.
What kind of enforcement actions would those be if we have 200 units instead of 498 years from now?
I think, I think what HCD is going, HCD is going to be monitoring how many units are permitted, right? Because permitting is within the purview of the town as opposed to actual construction. And if, if the town is far behind in meeting its arena, say midpoint in the, in the, in the planning period, then the town, or then HCD might be looking at, what are some of the reasons? Have you failed to implement some of those programs that are meant to address barriers to housing construction? And is that why you're lagging behind? So if that's the case, then there might be some enforcement actions related to it. What I would say is halfway through the fifth cycle, when statewide, most jurisdictions were far behind in their arena numbers, the state passed SB 35, which allows for streamlining, streamlined review of projects. And so there may be, if, if collectively, most jurisdictions in the state are, are far behind at the midway point in this upcoming planning period, the state may choose to take some, some other legislative action like that as well.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more questions. You mentioned early on in the presentation that there are incentives to develop HDU units. And you upped the number from 11 to 20. What are those incentives?
Yeah, the, they're actually in chapter four of the, of the housing element. If you wanted to relong, it's under, I believe it's under goal one. And so I'm looking at them right now. They go from program 1H through 1M. So for example, the town will undertake promotional activities to raise awareness among.
You have a page number?
Oh, yes. Page four dash four at the bottom, ADU awareness. And so the town will, you know, prepare email blasts and newsletters, have a presence at pop-up events around the community, do how-to seminars for interested property owners to let people know about available resources to them, funding, funding and financing, planning resources. So raise awareness of, of the benefits and the resources available to interested homeowners. The town is also going to under program 1I. The town will prepare pre-approved ADU floor plans. So I think in Fairfax, because of the topography and the environmental constraints, it would be difficult to just do off-the-shelf ADUs. But at least pre-approved floor plans can provide significant cost savings for homeowners who are interested and, and help reduce the cost. And so that's another incentive that the town will do to, to promote ADU production, providing technical assistance. ADU Marin is a, is a great resource. And, but town staff also can help homeowners navigate the, the development process, the permitting process. So that's.
Just to add on the technical assistance, we're, we're kind of getting a jump on that. We're already investigating potentially, as I, as Marin County, we're potentially going to be joining up with Sonoma County and Napa County. They have an ADU center, which kind of helps people with technical assistance and sample floor plans and putting them in touch with resources. So, so there's some collaboration that, that can help with, with, with that type of thing. Cause a lot of it with, with some of the homeowners don't necessarily, aren't necessarily familiar with the construction industry. And so that can help put them in contact with the right people. So anyway, I just wanted to comment that out.
And, and then a couple is 1K is fee discounts. The town already offers fee discounts for owners of unpermitted ADUs who want to legalize their ADUs and bring them into code. But through implementation of the housing element, that would be expanded to offer additional fee discounts like application fees and impact fees for, for interested homeowners. There's a financial assistance program, making people aware of state funding and state grants and also potentially looking at partnerships with, with lenders. And then there's some program 1M is about zoning incentives. So looking at allowing more than one detached or attached ADU on larger lots and allowing for, for tiny homes. So those are a variety of different incentives.
Good. Thank you. In, further in the presentation, talking about the Town and Country Club, you had a three bullet points, no action, which of course doesn't help the housing element. You had mixed use and full development. In the mixed use version, what I saw on the slide was that it would not achieve the project goal. And, and I'm not sure why that would be. Can you allude to how that, how those pieces come together?
Yeah, it's, it's a little nuanced, but early on in the process, this is, it's a particularly thorny issue. And so we wanted to consult with HCD staff. And so that's one of the first things we did. And what they told us is, so you remember that the requirement is to identify sites that are available for housing. Well, the Marin Town and Country Club site doesn't have zoning that allows for housing today. So technically it's not available. Could it be rezoned? Well, yes, it could be rezoned, but not like other sites in town because it requires a ballot initiative, a successful ballot initiative to, to change the zoning to allow housing. And, and so HCD's advice to us was, well, you can include the Marin Town and Country Club site on the inventory, but you need to have enough other sites to get to your capacity plus a buffer. And then Marin Town and Country Club would only be gravy on the top because, because it involves this ballot measure and it can't be said with certainty that the ballot measure would pass within, with enough time to actually have permitting and construction happen within the eight-year period to have those units count towards arena. And so for that reason, we decided not to include it on the inventory because it doesn't help the town meet its objectives. However, in the land use element that we'll be updating in the new year, what we discussed previously with the community and with the council was including a policy direction in the land use element to discuss the future of that site with the community and to potentially, if appropriate, you know, prepare for a ballot measure and rezoning, you know, so they can be available in the, in the next housing element cycle.
Yeah. So item, item two and item three have the same, the same failure. And that is that you can convince HUD that it's something that is feasible within this planning period.
Right, right.
Going on, I have a few more to, I believe, during the EIR, I think you discussed the, the fire protection plan. And if I remember correctly, that stated for sites in a fire hazard, that means all sites in, 99% of all sites in Fairfax, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Yeah. So that is for any and all development that would move forward. Okay. Thank you for that. I have then a last one. And that's actually something that is in the, in the reso for the housing element. Section three, item E, that's the last bullet point under the findings. It states, based on substantial evidence in the records, the existing uses on the non-vacant sites identified in the site inventory to accommodate the RNA are likely to be discontinued during the planning period. So I understand that. I have not been able to find that evidence. So where is that?
It's in chapter three and also in appendix G. So if you look at page 312, starting on page 312, there's a section called underutilized properties. And it goes on for, for several pages, but it identifies, so we looked at comparable sites in other Marin County jurisdictions. We looked at the site conditions. So I guess what, here in Fairfax, parcel size tends to be small. And there's a, there's a lot of flood risk and liquefaction, high liquefaction risk. And so those are potential constraints. We looked, and there hasn't been a lot of multifamily development in Fairfax over the last five to 10 years that we can look at to demonstrate you know, past performance. And so we did a survey of other, you know, multifamily development in comparable Marin County jurisdictions. And we looked at the conditions on those sites and the analysis is demonstrating that there's comparable conditions. So there's high liquefaction risk on, on sites in other communities that have developed with multifamily housing and, and flood risk that it, while it adds to costing, costing complexity, it hasn't been a, it hasn't been a, too high a hurdle. And so on, on, on the basis of that evidence, the sites that we've identified were identified as feasible. Additionally, we did a series of property owner forums where we, we reached out via email and phone to all of the underutilized property owners and invited them, give them information about the housing element process, invited them to participate in a series of conversations. Through that, you'll see on table, table three, five, where we've indicated that probably at least half of those property owners have indicated that they, they are interested in, in housing. In the course of those conversations, they identified some of the particular challenges that they face. And so we've tried to incorporate programs that address those, those challenges as well. I would say that in the course of those conversations, there were some property owners who told us they were, they had no plans to do housing. And so we removed those sites. And so the ones that are on here have either strongly indicated that they're interested or have not indicated that they're not interested. And anyway, so all of this is part of, part of the analysis. The other, the other thing I will say is that survey of other recent Marin County multifamily jurisdictions, we also looked at the zoning applicable to those sites. And that's something that HCD raised in their letter. And so we've gone ahead and, and making sure that the, the standards in the workforce housing overlay are, are comparable to what's been successful in other jurisdictions. And that's something that HCD asks that we do. And so you'll see that in the red lines. There's additional analysis for that.
Okay.
So all of that is the, I'm summarizing quickly, but it's all there. That's the substantial.
So it's other than the pipeline project, the, the evidence here is a comparative study, which indicates that the site, for all means and purposes, is suitable.
Exactly, exactly. And then.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Am I right?
Well, um, thank you. That was a lot of information that you went through earlier. Thank you for that great thorough presentation. Just want to say that I'm relatively new on the planning commission, so I'm catching up on a lot of the housing element stuff here. But I did have a couple of questions. I want to start with a few pretty high level things to just clarify. So we're out of compliance, right? And, and, and many, actually, I'm not sure how many other communities in the county are out of compliance. But one of the risks of being out of compliance, in addition to the fines you mentioned and other things, is that that we may, may get some folks coming to the table using SB 35 or otherwise known as builder's remedies. Is that correct? People submitting, or are those two different things, SB 35?
They're two different things.
They're two different things. Okay. Well, I guess I'm going to focus for the moment on the risk of, you know, our community not getting into compliance and, and what the risks are out there in terms of folks coming to the table using builder's remedy to develop things that have far less sort of public oversight than otherwise we're hoping to accomplish with, you know, having a, a kind of certified housing element. So I guess my question is, has anyone, have, have any applications come to the table submitting or pursuing the kind of builder's remedy approach here in Fairfax to date?
No, no.
No, no. Okay. And in comparison to other communities in Marin County, how's Fairfax doing in relationship to other counties in terms of progress towards HCD approval of the housing elements?
Yeah, I think to date, four jurisdictions in Marin have, have achieved certification. And so the rest are, are still working towards it. As I mentioned, Fairfax is a little bit behind the curve, but we've made a lot of progress this year. In September, early September, after HCD sent us the letter, town staff invited our reviewer from HCD to come to Fairfax. We took them on a tour of the sites and we had a, had a conversation. And what our reviewer said after having seen the site, she said, oh, now I get it. The, I see you've identified appropriate sites. And here's my advice to you on, on what's needed to, to further demonstrate the viability of those sites. And so what we've done in these revisions is to beef up our appendix G. Appendix G is where we have that survey of other comparable sites. But now we've included more analysis about why the sites that we've identified have similar characteristics. But there's, there's a profile of each of the sites with some photos and a description of the existing uses and to help to give a flavor for, for why they're appropriate candidates for redevelopment. So on the basis of the, of having seen the sites and, and addressing those, those comments, we're, we're pretty confident that we're going to get to certification with this.
And presuming we move forward with that timeline you described in terms of planning commission and town council approving the housing elements and EIR and zoning updates, what's the targeted or, or the date where we hope to be in compliance and therefore no longer at risk of a builder's remedy project coming to the table?
So we published, yesterday, we published the redline version that addresses all of the HCD comments. Under state law, that has to be publicly available for seven days. We'll, we'll take comments. And then we send it back to HCD for, for a second review. With that, we'll, we've prepared a matrix that, that takes each of their comments in a letter, puts it into a matrix and, and says, here's how we've addressed your comment and where you can find it in the document to help speed their review. We, so a week from today, we will be sending the, the revised redline back to HCD to start their review. Under state law, they have 60 days to complete their review. But we've already set up a meeting with our reviewer in early December to get some initial feedback. You know, she'll have, you know, a couple of weeks to look at the document. And then she's going to give us some, some feedback. Their typical process could well be, they're not going to wait 60 days to give us feedback. They might give us an interim review and say, all right, you've addressed almost all of our comments, but here's a few little things that you need to button up and we can work with them during the 60 days to get, to get the review. So it's a kind of a long-winded answer, but I think that we are going to submit next week, HCD will have 60 days to make their determination. So that's probably the, the outer window. But we would hope, because we've developed a working relationship and we, we've already have inter-meeting set up with our HCD reviewer, that we can get to certification before the end of that 60 days.
Okay. And so we have a certified housing element. Does that then include all of the necessary zoning updates have, will have been accomplished by that time, time as well?
Yeah, well, even before that, well, I guess 60 days. Yeah, we're looking, we, our, our plan of record is by the 31st of, of January next year, to have had hearings before the planning commission and to be, to have all of the implementing zoning amendments before the town council. And so I, it's quite possible that the zoning amendments will be adopted before we get formal certification. In fact, In fact, HCD might actually require that. They want to see it.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that, the sort of big picture overview. Um, a couple of specific questions then. Um, I think on the the EIR um, unavoidable, significant unavoidable impacts, uh, you mentioned a couple mitigation measures such as uh, parking demand management and also um, non-motorized transportation incentives that those had been sort of studied or implemented to the maximum degree possible and that those impacts were taken, you know, taken to, into consideration. Well, I just want to dig into that a little bit, you know, my understanding is that town of Fairfax passed a, a bike and a pet and bike master plan in twenty ten. Actually, that includes a significant amount of proposed uh, you know, bicycle infrastructure upgrades, none of which have actually been accomplished. So, you know, I don't know how to sort of move this forward, but it seems to me that there's still more room potentially to reduce the degree of significant unavoidable impacts by further pushing on as a community what we've already approved actually in a pet and bike master plan. None of that stuff's been implemented. So I'm, I'm not going to, you know, harass you as the consultant about that. That's not your job. I just want to put that, put that out there. I think that we could do more to investigate even within our currently approved plans, what's possible to avoid those impacts. Um, second one is, is a um, parking demand management. So we have a whole downtown parking area. There's, we don't have a parking demand man, or we don't have a parking uh, management strategy. I think that's something uh, also that we could look into a bit more deeply, how we better um, yeah, um, uh, manage the parking that we do have i- in our town center to again, try to reduce those significant uh, unavoidable impacts. So that's just a something I would advocate for as a planning commission member. Um, I think those are all my comments at the moment.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start with the housing element. The PowerPoint, you mentioned that um, you talked about housing in the commercial area. Um, and you and it went by fast, but you talked that design standards were established by the state. We have objective design standards here. I'm not aware of design standards established by the state. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Um, there's a couple of new laws that came into, into force in January of this year, AB twenty eleven and SB six. And um, they essentially, I guess you would say they, they trump local jurisdiction. They say if there is commercially zoned land, um, uh, even if the local jurisdiction doesn't allow housing on it, um, this, these new state laws will allow for housing if um, twenty percent uh, is made available to uh, lower income households. And um, if the standards that are established in those laws regarding setbacks and building heights and street frontages are um, implemented, then, then a property owner can build housing on a commercial or an office site, even if the local jurisdiction, uh, the, the zoning of the local jurisdiction doesn't allow it. That's what I was referring to. Um, so what I was, the point I was trying to make is that state law has already given, um, because right now under current zoning, uh, there isn't, it, there's a possibility, you can build housing on commercially, on some commercially zoned sites with a conditional use permit. Um, but the state has gone ahead and said, if a, if a Fairfax, uh, if a Fairfax property owner of a commercially zoned site uh, wants to build housing and make twenty percent of it affordable to lower income households, they can do it. Even though uh, local zoning doesn't allow for it. Um, but, and then state law establishes these objective design standards that would apply in that case. So um, but what we're doing is, what this workforce housing overlay would do would be to um, I guess, take back that control and, and establish the conditions and the standards under which um, housing could happen on the, on the commercially zoned sites. That's the point that I was trying to make.
So my second question relates to the workforce housing that you mentioned. And you mentioned that, and I know we'll be dealing with workforce housing, and this is going to be a question that I was going to ask during that discussion, but you specifically said that the workforce housing was for workforce working in Fairfax. Either the housing element, I think the housing element may speak to workforce housing applicable to anyone that works in Fairfax or within the county. So can you clarify what you were saying as to the workforce housing is for those that work in Fairfax?
Right. I think um, what, fair housing law means that a local jurisdiction can't limit it to people who live in Fairfax. So that, what I was trying to say is that um, right now, uh, there isn't enough housing available, you know, to people who work in the shops and the cafes and, and other things. And, and so uh, the workforce housing overlay would create more housing that's, that would be available to, um, to people who already work in Fairfax. Not that it would be limited to people that work in Fairfax. It just would be available to people who work here. And other surrounding Marin County jurisdictions as well.
Okay, so that's an important clarification to make. Um, when speaking about workforce housing in Fairfax and, and part of that, we'll have a discussion on that when it comes before us. Um, the draft of the housing element that we had spoke to a Fairfax's default density of twenty dwelling units per acre. Can you tell me where that is defined in Fairfax that we have a default?
So it's actually, it's actually defined in state law, um, in state housing element law. Um, it depends on this, uh, on the size and the characteristics of the, of the county. Um, and so there's different default densities. So for San Francisco and Oakland, the default, the default density is thirty dwelling units per acre. In Marin County, it's twenty dwelling units per acre, um, just because of the, the average density in the area. What default density means is um, the state of California considers that density. Uh, they deem it affordable to lower income households. Um, based on their studies, higher density housing tends to be um, smaller and more affordable for, uh, and more affordable and therefore, um, like, in the housing element process, um, we look at when, when there's an actual project proposed on a site, these pipeline projects that I'm talking about, we know how many units are happening on which site and we count those towards RENA. But the vast majority of the RENA is not that case. We don't have an actual project that we can point to. So we have to project. Um, and uh, we can't demonstrate that there are, you know, which sites are going to be available for lower income households. And so HCD has set up this process where they say, if a site meets these standards for size and relative lack of environmental constraints and the zoning is appropriate, meaning it's uh, at least twenty dwelling units per acre, then you can project that units on that site will be for lower income households. And so that's where the default comes from and that's how it's used, if that makes sense.
Okay, and it would be great to get an actual reference.
Sure.
In state law on that. Um, and then, because one of the questions that I had is there were two town owned parcels on Forest that I think were identified as ten dwelling units per parcel. So I didn't know how the default twenty dwelling units um, relates to that. But it would be great to get a reference on that. Um, going on in the housing element, it taught, in the land inventory section, and this will bleed over into um, the EIR, which we were working on a draft and you said, I think that you're going to have an updated one coming out tomorrow, but we haven't seen that. So you'll get questions related to that from the draft that we had before us. Land inventory, it says land within the town limit is classified as a moderate and high fire hazard severity zone, given the risk of wildfire in the region. These environmental hazards can be mitigated through design and construction techniques. However, this adds cost and complexity to new development in Fairfax. I don't know where land in the town jurisdiction is classified as moderate and high fire hazard severity zone. So you know, going back to the EIR, those severity zones are CAL FIRE SRA areas. The only thing that we have in Fairfax is the WUI, which is in our local jurisdiction. Um, so I wanted some information on that as to why it's saying that we have a high and moderate fire hazard severity zone, going back then to the EIR, which has mapping that shows that, um, and I'm not sure is correct. But if you could, and maybe I'll just leave that until we get to the EIR, because I have more on that, but that was
Okay.
A piece in, in the housing element. Um, and then we get on to, um, you mentioned briefly the priority conservation areas. And we've got three of them identified. Um, by A-BAG, one of them is the Western Fairfax, Tamarancho Cascade area, the Southern Fairfax Bald Hill area and the Northern Fairfax, Sleepy Hollow Oak Manor area. Okay. So A-BAG defines property uh, priority conservation areas as regionally significant open spaces which have broad agreement for long-term protection. And goes on to say that these lands are being pressured by urban development and other factors and are supported through local government consensus. So two questions there. Do you have any information on how we got those three priority conservation areas identified by A-BAG? And then my second question would be, do we have any sites that are near any of those areas?
Um, so the process for uh, having priority conservation id, areas designated in by MTC is for the local jurisdictions to nominate them. Um, and so Fairfax, or I guess in the case of the Bald Hill one, it's probably Fairfax and San Anselmo, maybe even Ross as well, would have together nominated uh, them. So it, the, the process is that the local jurisdictions nominate it and then it gets um, included in, in planned Bay Area. So that's how they came about. Um, we actually contacted uh, MTC to, to understand, because as I mentioned in my presentation, and I know it was a little quick. The, the data that's available from MTC and A-BAG doesn't clearly define the boundaries of those three areas. It's just a point on a map. And so we wanted to know what are the boundaries? And A-BAG said, we, we don't know what the boundaries are. There, there hasn't been defined. They're, they're in the process now of refining their, um, their priority conservation areas. And so there, there may be new data available in the future, but it's not available now. Um, so the, the only way we can ma, there is a textual description, which I think you might be looking at, um, even on a, on a printout there. There's a textual description of where they are. And there's a point on a map, but we don't know the, the precise boundaries. But anyway, that's the process for how they got there and, and that's what we know at this point.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and do we have any sites that are potentially close to
Do you want to?
Those descriptions?
I'm going to, we have a slide in there that sort of shows it. Where was it? Yeah. Where was it? Oh, I can't. Not, not very close, not very close. Um, the, the wall property would have been the one that was, that is closest to a dot on the map, but that's been removed. And so now we don't.
Okay. Um, now I'm going to go on to my EIR questions and keep in mind that what we had was the draft. And if there's been any updates to it, we haven't seen those before the meeting. So just for clarification, the planning area for the EIR is defined as the town of Fairfax, the jurisdiction, correct?
Correct.
And the project for the EIR are all of the sites, the housing within the draft housing elements.
The project is uh, is actually adopting the housing element and the related zoning amendments. Um, so it's uh, adopting the map of sites and all the programs that, that go with it.
Okay, so the map of this, of the sites, which includes multifamily, single family, ADUs, a mixture of housing there. Um, and the EIR identifies our current population as seven thousand three hundred and ninety nine. And says that the project is expected to increase that population by one thousand one hundred and seventy one over the course of the housing element. Okay. So the EIR um, identifies um, states that census data shows that twelve hundred people commute to jobs in Fairfax. But there's no reference there to specifically where that information came from. It seems, you know, twelve hundred folks coming to jobs in, in Fairfax seems a little high. Do you have a, a reference on that?
Yeah, it would be the, um, so the US Census produces a, a data set called On the Map, um, that shows commute patterns. Um, and I, that's probably where it's from.
Okay. Um, looking at the impacts, so you mentioned some of them, air quality was an impact, um, biological resources. The air quality mitigation measures identified relate to um, the uh, Bay Area air quality requirements. Their basic control mitigation measures on new project development. So the mitigation measure says that we would um, follow those mitigation measures on new project development. So considering that our project is single family homes, ADUs, multifamily homes, would that be applicable to all of those projects or would there be some determination as to what's applicable to the size of a project?
Yes, there, um, so the, the air quality district produces guidelines for sequo analysis and there are thresholds and single family homes usually uh, don't um, trip the threshold for additional analysis and um, and, and mitigation measures. So these, this mitigation measure would apply primarily to the, to larger scale projects. Um, if there were to be a subdivision, uh, you know, of, of several homes, then uh, that would probably meet the threshold. Uh, and some of the infill projects would meet the threshold. ADUs typically would not.
Okay. Um, because again, just reading the draft EIR, it's not real clear when you look at that. Um, to get that information. So that's why I'm asking the questions, the biological resources. So that talks about sites with a potential for special status species to occur would go through this process. So a question that I had, and when you look at the maps, you've got um, the obscure bumblebee on the map. The circle is the entire jurisdiction for that. So when projects come to the town, how do, how is the determination made that the, a site would have a potential for a special species, special status species to occur and then go through all those processes?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that the um, Fish and Wildlife requested that checklist in their comment letter. I touched on it briefly in the presentation. Their, their comment letter requested that we prepare a uh, project checklist. So that uh, and include that in, into the final EIR, so that as projects come forward, they will look at it and they'll see, are, am I in an area where this species is likely to occur? If yes, what, what are the, what are the mitigation measures that I need to implement? So that's why they asked for it and that's why we prepared it. Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Um, I'll just leave it on. Um, there was also some references and they may have. There was also some references, and they may have been changed in the draft that we have to the town of Fairfax, I mean, town of Ross in there. One of them in that biological resources section talked about five natural communities in Ross. It wasn't clear to me whether that was actually the those five were applicable to Ross, or that was just a typo that Ross should have been Fairfax. So, you know, and I don't know if that's something that's been reviewed for the next update, but can you speak to whether those were?
I would have to check with the with the person who wrote it. I would expect that actually the five communities do exist in Fairfax, and it was just a typo, but we can double check that.
Okay. And then one of the concerns, and and you got them on comments, were evacuations, were wildfires in the town. It was noted that the description of wildfires history didn't mention one in nineteen twenty three that came from Ignacio all the way down down here, but again, the maps, there's a a map, figure three point fifteen dash two, that denotes the town as a high fire severity zone. So again, it's confusing because as far as I can see, that's a CAL FIRE reference for SRAs, and that's not Fairfax. I don't know.
So I can help with that. So the CAL FIRE actually has maps two types. They map SRAs, which are the state responsibility areas, and so that's unincorporated county. And they map LRAs, the local responsibility areas, which are within local jurisdictions. And so what this map, three fifteen two is showing is L R A areas in Fairfax. And so almost all of the area within the town limit is designated by CAL FIRE as high fire hazard severity.
So it would be great, because in looking at the last CAL FIRE mappings, unless they've updated L R A areas. The only L R A areas that show up on there for Marin County or Nevada, Mill Valley, and I think Larkspur. So if you have a draft, and I know they were working on those, if you have a draft CAL FIRE L R A map, it would be great to share that.
Sure, that's what that's what that's what three fifteen two is showing. It's showing it's, we took the data from from CAL FIRE and just projected it into into our map.
Okay, and and it would be great to get the reference from where you got it from CAL FIRE.
Yep.
Also, in the draft E I R, it speaks to the C P U C fire fire threat districts. But it references Ross, not Fairfax. So while, and again, I don't know if that's been reviewed as part of what you're going to update. Fairfax does have tier two and tier three. Oops, sorry. I think those are the questions that I had. So any other, any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just a quick follow up from something you mentioned on, I think you mentioned that a number of our potential sites in the housing in our inventory are subject to A B two eleven, the commercial development zones, and my understanding that that applies to properties along a commercial corridor, however a commercial corridor is defined. And I was just looking into the code there. It says that it's a seventy foot minimum, right, of way up to one hundred fifty? And I think most of our surface Drake areas are way less than seventy. So is it, could you clarify, do those, is there some other definition of commercial corridor whereby those sites are subject to A B two eleven?
I would have to, I would have to double check against the code.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it for questions from up? Go ahead.
Yep, just one other follow up from something Chair Swift was asking about. So with the E I R, I think you noted part of the element of it being a programmatic E I R is that ultimately, for any specific projects, if they're subject to SEQA, they have to redo their own analysis. So this is, you know, in the context of the biological resources with the bees and other things, that sort of thing, are they going to have to crib from this, but do their own, they're responsible for their own analysis? If the CAL FIRE maps update and boundaries change, are they going to, for each individual project, have to pull from the latest maps?
The normal process is to, for a project coming forward, it would first do an initial study, which is essentially a sort of a scan for environmental impacts. And so they would look at the housing element E I R, they'd look at the the impacts that were identified, and they would, in the course of their initial study, they'd assess, does that programmatic E I R adequately cover all of the impacts that my project could could produce? And and if the answer is no to any of those things, and it could be, because at the programmatic level, we don't exactly know where the housing is going. I mean, we know the sites in the general area, but we don't know where on the sites it's going. And we don't, you know, we might know generally the geologic conditions or the hydrologic conditions, but we don't know precisely what they are. And so we're, because we don't know exactly what development is going to be proposed, what it looks like and where it is, there may not, you know, the the programmatic E I R might not cover all of those impacts. And if that's the case, if there are site specific impacts, once those project details are known, then that subsequent project would need to do some level of SEQA. Now, maybe it's only a mitigated negative declaration. Maybe they 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 find a new impact, but they can, with mitigation measures, reduce it to less than significant. And so they would do that sort of more simpler document. Or maybe they would need to do their own E I R if the impacts are are really more severe and would result in significant and unavoidable impacts.
Got it. And I think so then to Chair Swift's comments on having more sources in here, I think that would be helpful in the event that somebody is doing a review for a specific project, seeing the sources, it's a lot easier for them to know whether or not those sources are out of date, or if it's an annually updated survey by CAL FIRE or things like that, so that they're not necessarily relying on the information here and doing updates where needed.
So I just want a quick follow up. Go ahead, Cindy.
No, a question for staff? Go ahead.
Sorry, just one more follow up on the the housing inventory sites subject to A B two eleven. So A B two eleven creates a SEQA exempt ministerial approval process. Is the intent of the workforce housing overlay to do something similar, or this is going to not provide, or it's a different framework? I guess my fundamental question is, is it going to create a comparable SEQA exempt ministerial approval process?
It's a, I I think the answer to that is yes. Well, that is what's going to be proposed in the draft that's going to come before you in December. Whether whether that's ultimately adopted is a different question. A little bit of a nuance there as well, because as I mentioned, some, but not all of those workforce housing overlay sites were used in prior inventories. And and if we want to carry them forward and count them towards lower income arena in the sixth, in this current six cycle, then they need to be rezoned to allow for housing by right, where at least twenty percent of the units are going to be made available to lower income. So we've, we have to do that, but not for all of the workforce housing overlay sites, only that subset of them that were used in prior inventories.
Okay, so I'm gonna now open it up for public comment. We'll start with those in the room. Just come on up if anyone has comments. Let's not fight over who gets to go first.
Rick Amher, Downtown Fairfax, I'd like to thank all of you for keeping this on track. It's very important, this January deadline, and despite all the adversity, I think that you've done a fantastic job and and keeping this on track. And I yield my time. I hope that everyone else has a little bit more than three minutes, because I think they have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Commissioners. Frank Agar from the Cascades, speaking for myself and Save Fairfax. You've got quite a task tonight. I'm glad I'm not up there having to vote on this one, because it's going to be real interesting where it goes. So I'm wondering, is this a quasi judicial hearing? You don't have to answer that right now, but I'm, I don't know whether or not it is. I, I, excuse me, it's not. Okay. I urge you to reject this resolution recommending the town council certify the almost seven hundred pages of the programmatic environmental impact report. It is woefully inadequate. I submitted timely comments on November tenth, twenty twenty three, to the to the draft, draft programmatic E I R. I will leave a hard copy again tonight, the same comments I also emailed to the planning department. One of the most important issues that has glossed over is a huge wild wildland fire threat. Since most of Fairfax is in a high fire hazard zone, the discussion of evacuation is totally insufficient and does not accept the reality of fact of our one roads in and one road out neighborhoods. We will not get out of here if a major wildland fire breaks, say, in the in in early nature preserve and comes to town. Many will die, die in their cars trying to evacuate. It will be impossible to obtain fire insurance on new development in Fairfax, all this development is proposed. With, because most of Fairfax is located in a high fire zone. If this E I R is certified and the housing element approved as prepared by Diet and Basia, who will take responsibility for the deaths and destruction? The planning commissioners? The town council members? Diet and Basia? Where's the water for up to five hundred ninety eight Fairfax units and the other fourteen thousand for the other eleven Marin jurisdictions coming from? This week, Radita and I were notified by Kemper, our insurance company, that they will not renew us when our policy expires in February. So we went to our broker and said, what's what's going on here? She says, Kemper will not, will not renew due to wildfire exposure. Well, I said, I'm sure you could find someone else. She went to State Farm. They will not write in Fairfax due to wildfire exposure. Safeco will not write in Fairfax due to wildlife exposure. Travelers will not write in Fairfax due to wildlife exposure. Mercury is not accepting new business in this area. What bank is going to loan funds for new developments that cannot be insured? This this housing amount, housing amount will drive prices up and rental rates up in Fairfax. That's going to be the outcome. Most will be market rate. School Street Plaza will have one hundred and forty market rate units. The one bedroom will rent for thirty five hundred a month, the two bedroom, forty five hundred a month. Fairfax workers cannot afford high rents like that. The seven story building at 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 School Street Plaza will require a ladder truck. Ross Valley Fire does not have one. For one point six million, they can buy one. To determine income levels to qualify for affordable housing, the project includes all countywide incomes, including Ross, San Anselmo, Tiburon, Mill Valley, Belvedere. It's a, those incomes are are all factored in to determine what affordable housing meet and and the income levels for a person and try trying to find affordable housing at Fairfax. I recommend that you use Fairfax Fairfax incomes only. We don't need to compete with Belvedere, Ross, and Tiburon. The 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 figures from 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 the the proposal, a Fairfax rental unit, if you can make up to one hundred four thousand a year and qualify as 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 a low income. Well, but the fact is, a male in Fairfax actually earns fifty one thousand four hundred fifty seven dollars per year, and the female earns forty thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars per year. That's Fairfax workers, all all Fairfax workers, whether they're house cleaners or work at a work at a restaurant or local grocery store. So the fact is, this is not, this is not designed for Fairfax people and Fairfax workers. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg here, Downtown Fairfax. I have copies of their set at ninety degree angles for each of you of letters that were not available to the public. This is supposed to be a public meeting. One of the letter writers, Talia Drawheim, had to ask three times to have her letter presented or letters regarding both the draft E I R and the housing element presented to you, you honorable commissioners. Something is wrong with this process. I object. The public objects to not being presented with a full set of facts to make decisions, and all of you should be very concerned that you're not providing for transparent government here. And I don't think you can make a decision tonight, because the public hasn't been presented with what the public has commented on. And even as commissioners yourselves, the head of this commission, pardon me, has just identified, based upon what Mr. Andrew Hill of Diet and Basia, the outside consultant, has indicated that the red line version hasn't even even been presented to this commission. And there's a seven day period where that goes to H C D. Additionally, to the best of my knowledge, the H C D rejection letter of the prior element hasn't been made public. How are any of us to know why Diet and Basia's and the prior consultant, which was let go but paid full amount with twenty percent done, why the plan is being rejected? Isn't that important before you make a decision tonight, before you rubber stamp something because somebody else wants you to do this? Don't you have a duty to read everything? Which brings me to, there's almost seven hundred pages, according to our seven time mayor, who I know read all of them. I want to ask you before the public to affirm that each of you read all of those seven hundred pages. And I'll pause for a moment if that's possible for you to answer that. But if you haven't read it, as the town council members have admitted to not reading things before, I urge you to not make a decision tonight if you haven't read it, because this will affect this town significantly. Speaking of significantly, and I'm going to use some of Rick's yielded time here. Okay, is that okay with everybody?
We don't do that process, but go ahead and quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. I I can finish up relatively quickly. I I want to bring up some failed logic here. First off, there are comments out there now that some of us have brought that were submitted November fourteenth by Frank Agar, by Michael McIntosh on September twenty second, and by Talia Drawheim on eleven twenty eight, that were not made available to the public other online. So those that are attending via Zoom don't get to see any of this information. Procedure, I've just asked about whether you read all the seven hundred pages and implore you to not vote if you didn't read all seven hundred pages. I think you're doing the town a disservice if you don't affirm that you read all seven hundred pages. I've talked about nonpublic notice, talked about noncommissioner notice. I think that what the attorney Janet Colson said earlier muddies the waters. It makes it really difficult to be talking about two things at once. It makes it really difficult to be talking about two things at once. I think as Chairman Swift indicated earlier, it should be discussed separately, each separate thing. So there is clarity and there's not obfuscation. Uh, uh, there's a difference of opinion. I understand that, but I disagree with what was advised. And I think it's important that it come out in the record. Uh, I want to give you a little example on math. Uh, there's some significantly misleading things here. The diet and Basha report says it's less than significant and talks about vehicle miles traveled and a 10% reduction anticipated per capita. Now, um, I, I need to be reminded, but I, I think I heard 7399 as the current population. I've heard 7,500 something, but let's just use some rough numbers. And I want to do basic math rather than relying on percentages that confuse people. I want you to understand what the real impact of what is being proposed here is. And I can give more examples, but this one should be something to be concerned about. So if there's, let's call it 7399 current residents here. And if according to Esurance, people drive 12,000 miles per year per car. Some might do more, some might do less. That's a total for Fairfax population, you'd have to adjust out the kids here that don't drive of 88,788,000 miles per year being driven. Now, if there's a 15% approximate increase in population, that would mean we would have 101,995,215,000, 215 miles per year driven with this increase in population. I'll do the math for you. That's 13,207,215 additional miles. That's not a percentage, that is miles. Think about what would be allowed. And I understand it. This is a difficult situation. I understand this is a quasi extortion situation where Fairfax and other towns are being held up against the wall. You're going to be fined if you don't do this. But I want to make it clear, how many jurisdictions are there in Marin County? It was said that four are in compliance. That means the bulk of them are not in compliance. And what's not said here tonight is that the bulk of the jurisdictions in California are not in compliance. So I urge you to really think carefully. The future is in your hands and this is not something to be rubber stamped whatsoever. And percentages and data need to be made precise, not referenced. And it, the draft EIR and the housing element and zoning changes should not just be, well, we've got to do this. I think that's basically, uh, what, oh, one more important thing here. This is really, really important. Frank and Michael McIntosh and Talia Drawheim and others that I'm not even aware of because it's not published for the public. I wasn't made aware of it and anyone else wasn't made aware of it. It's a big effort. It's a big effort to even get anything published into the public record. It's not done automatically here. So I've got a question for, um, our principal planner this evening and maybe if she doesn't have the data in front of her, the people that we're paying do. Maybe Mr. Andrew Hill from Diet and Basha can tell us not with another misleading reference to 2018 and assumptions, but how many ADUs? Let's just do it since 2018, but I'd rather go back 10 years. How many ADUs have been done each year in Fairfax? And how many ADUs have been applied for? How many ADUs have been built since the fiasco of Fairfax's strictest in California rent controls was passed? And how do you think that anyone in their sane mind would build an ADU in Fairfax with the rent control laws that are in place? I challenge you. I challenge your assumptions about ADUs. I think they're entirely faulty and that you don't reference anything about the contention of, and the citizen initiative for the keep Fairfax fair act that's going to be voted on in November 2024. When you're talking about ADU assumptions is a deep flaw in this report.
Can you wrap it up, Todd?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. And we did get the comments, um, from Mr. Egger, Mr. McIntosh and Ms. Drawheim. Her input, um, just information.
Thank you, Commission. Um, as for the comments, um, I do have support. I, I first want to say honestly, because as you guys know, I've gone to the majority of almost all the council meetings. Okay, I said, I've gone to the majority, if not all, the council meetings or almost all the council meetings last 21 years. And I do appreciate your overall demeanor towards the speaking audience, especially when we have something that's difficult to hear. I see a much more polite and attentive group of faces. And so honestly, thank you very much. So even if I complain about something, I still want to give you a really a deserved compliment. Um, first off too, I'd like to say, I do believe this, this does qualify for a contested hearing. You've talked about not providing the full information that a draft report will be available in seven days, that a red line issue is not given to the, the commission as well as the public has not been given this. And that was given to you, I believe I heard last night. You also have contentions in the information as presented in the report. You have not provided to the general public. And although some of our comments are now provided outside, I provided a cumulative group of comments on November 10th to be included. I know that Heather responded because I, I CC'd the state of California. These were also sent to the commission through Linda and yourself Cindy. Those things need to be included for the public disclosure and a public comment so that in the packet, people can say, oh yeah, that's a good idea and respond to it. This was not, which means that all the people that could not come down here and read, if you go look at that, five inches of documents. Nobody, nobody had the benefit of the collective wisdom of your community. And that's really a disservice to everybody. So on my comments, again, I do think this is a contested hearing. And if you're not familiar with the implications of that, it might be worthy of looking it up. Um, two, let's see, did, if you read the DEIR and the alternate plan calling for 50,000 square feet of commercial mixed use plus an additional 200 units at the Marin Town and Country Club. Additionally, it states that it would have the same mitigatable impacts as no implementation of the current 490 homes were to occur. Well, first off, why would anybody here support 50,000 square feet of mixed commercial use? Look around our communities. Look at Santa Fels, San Antonio, Fairfax. There's vacancies. That would just create another debacle for everybody here. It says on your resolution, 202332, quote, whereas November 29th, 2023, the planning commission conducted a duty and properly noticed public hearing reviewed for the housing element and all pertinent maps, documents, exhibits, including HCD's findings, the town's response to HCD's findings, the staff report and all attachments oral and written public comments recommended the town council consider certification of the environmental impact report upon completion of the final ER and determination, the housing element to be consistent with state law and general plan of the Fairfax. Kind of poor language, but as of this evening, all comments submitted about the subject have not been available to the general public for review. So again, you can't certify a statement that knowingly is false. Resolution 2333. Whereas on November 29th, 2023, the planning commission conducted a duly and properly noticed public hearing reviewed the housing element and all pertinent maps, documents, exhibits, including HCD's findings, the town response to HCD's finding, the staff report and all attachments, oral and written public comments recommended adaption of the environmental impact report and determine the housing element to be consistent with state law and the general plan of Fairfax. As of this evening, all comments submitted about this project have not been available to the general public to review. So again, that is inconsistent with your statement that you're, that's before you tonight to vote on. So as you've heard earlier, I think you need to pull this item and allow the public comment if you want to say that you reviewed it and made publicly available to everybody. So people that are on Zoom, they're not down here reading that five inches, nor could they do that in next two hours. So again, I don't think you can properly vote on either one of these resolutions. Um, section 3D, also of 2333. It says, based on substantial evidence in the record, the existing uses on the non vacant sites identified in the site inventory to accommodate the arena are likely to be discontinued during the planning period and therefore do not constitute an impediment to planned residential development on the site during the planned period. What that translates to, that all the houses and businesses on their housing site list will be discontinued, removed. Where are those businesses and people supposed to go? Mr. Hill made a comment that everybody on those site lists were reached out to and they all concurred they wanted housing. I will challenge that if you want. I'll bring back a list that says again, false statement. People attending Zoom do not have the benefits of any of this documentation when you do not present it to them. You're not providing it to them. I think for me, the, the biggest thing that should really be looked at in this. I speak before you as somebody who would possibly benefit for some of this development on my property. I don't want all of it, but please step back and look at the impacts to the town. And even by their mitigable impacts as the same if you did no building for the 490 units. The thing that you really want to consider is if you put this housing throughout the town, the first thing you're going to do, you will employ all the consultants in the world, but you're going to have to rebuild all of our inadequate roads. Rob lives on Forest Avenue. You go down Forest Avenue, there are truly sections, big sections that have dropped four inches. They're now sealed so that they don't wash down a hill. So you'll be required to do that. You will also be required to upgrade all the utilities. And those utilities include sewage. Sewage flows downhill. So by eminent domain, you're going to take some people's property. All those things, if you could get them done for $90 million, no way. Finance it out, $180 million over 30 years, the best day of your life. All those things that I just cited would be exempt if all that housing, and again, I'm not going to take it all. So you're going to have to figure out some other way to put some of it. If some of that housing was put on Marin Town and Country Club, I already have a sewer line in place for 8,000 units as discussed and disclosed by the Ross Valley Sanitation District. It's a 14 inch plenum. It's part of the main sewer line that is breached in 1920, to me is breached in 1972, is dropped in 1922 for the entire western part of this valley. I already have the water coming in with an easement to increase that. For fire safety mitigation, I'm above the 500 year flood plain. Everybody in this town could come to my property for safety. The bridge going into it is absolutely restricted. But the road is not. Fairfax chose to save money. And so on past story, they only paid 18 feet curb to curb. It's a surveyed, recorded road that is 30 feet curb to curb. I also own the Annapachaco where there used to be a bridge many years ago. That is 24 feet curb to curb. That will also provide fire safety egress for important or emergency vehicles. So again, what you're really doing, you're committing the general population of this town to an additional $200 million in bonding and financing over 30 years. And I really don't think the general population can afford it. And here is an opportunity that you could save the town. And again, it should really be our town council, and I hope you guys would be there trying to work out with the different stakeholders, myself included, instead of batting it around for something beneficial. Hearing tonight from Andrew Hill that there's this plan to have another initiative that they design in January so that they can make another ghetto, a slum. I really don't think the town can afford to pay for that taking. And I brought this up in writing and I really suggest that you review Nick KNICK versus Scott Township. And that will also implement that now Williamson County has been put aside. One can jump directly to your constitutional protections. And between the 5th and 14th, should such a taking occur, I'll be paid back, which is another bond, but that's again, before you do any sort of work. You are putting a financial burden on this town that is inconceivable and unsurroundable. And what's lacking in this entire presentation is a feasibility study that talks about the cost of the different projects and where they are. So I really hope that the commission here exercise your voice as I spoke originally and don't go along with the narrative. Think of what's best for your constituents. Consultants are paid to do something and the only way they're going to be evaluated is if they bring forth change. You have an opportunity to say, hey, we really appreciate your comments. And I think Andrew honestly has made a very good presentation. He's been very prepared. I have not heard him unable to not answer a single question, although he's certainly obfuscated a few answers, but I give him credit for that. But he's, here's your support as a consultant, not as your end all. You guys are part of the community, whether you're elected or you're appointed. You're here to represent the majority while protecting the voice of the minority. And I really encourage you to not support the two um, resolutions in front of you. I pointed out their deficiencies. You've heard other comments also that should bring great pause. So please exercise your voice, the voice of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public in the room? If not, we'll go to Zoom.
Let's just give Zoom one minute to point out again, this is your time on Zoom. Please use the raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen if you'd like to comment on this item. I see no hands raised, Chair.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back, um, to the commission for discussions, questions, comments. I have a couple, go ahead.
Uh, let, let me start with a, uh, uh, there's a question for staff. It's procedural and I, maybe this is important. Um, the, the odd thing when I was reading it is that if we look at the EIR, we are trying to certify a document today, whereas the final one is not yet issued. Um, so and it is, it, it is stated in the last words, I'm looking at resolution, uh, 32. So in the last whereas it does mention that and it says, you know, it, it, in the sentencing, it says like, well, recommended town to consider the certification of the environmental impact report, comma, up on completion of the final. So it makes that statement. But I'm not sure how you can do that. So what are we certifying then? Then, then we're certifying a draft.
Yes. Well, no, you're making, you're not certifying anything. You're making a recommendation to the town council. And so the sequel guidelines, 15025, uh, section C, where an advisory body such as a planning commission is required to make a recommendation on a project to the decision making. Yeah, 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 yeah. Can you hear me better? Okay, uh, 15025, section C, where an advisory body such as a planning commission is required to make a recommendation on a project to the decision making body. The advisory body shall also review and consider the EIR or negative declaration in draft or final form. So you can make a recommendation or draft.
Yeah. So we basically, we have the substantial amount of information, including red lines. That body together gives us a good overview of what it is and we can base our recommendation on that.
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so I have a question, um.
For staff. On the issue of a contested hearing, can you speak to that?
Um, I try not to um comment on public comments like that. Um, I have no idea what he's talking about.
My second um. Comment was was on the reso. And it's twenty-three thirty-three. I'm getting there. To the point brought up um. On three E where it says based on substantial, and this might be for. Planning director plant um based on substantial evidence in the record, the existing uses on the non vacant sites identified in the site inventory. To accommodate the arena are likely to be discontinued during the planning period. And therefore do not constitute an impediment to planned residential development on the site during. During the planning period. Can you speak to that? Some of these sites are. You know, where there's a market or that type of thing. So how do we identify? How do we know? That sites that are not vacant. That we can make the determination that they're likely to discontinue the current use.
Yeah, um, so council member or Commissioner Jansen had the same question earlier on. And the answer is is in chapter three and in appendix G. It's that uh it's based on our assessment of the sites that we identified in comparison to that. Survey of other comparable sites in in Marin County. Um, so it's a consideration of those environmental uh factors, the particular site characteristics. Um, it's uh, it's a, it's based on those um property owner forums that we conducted with the um with the property owners. To to gauge interest and understand what their constraints were. And uh, and the the programs that we've included in the housing element to help address those constraints. All of that constitutes the substantial evidence. That the that the sites are viable for redevelopment during the planning period.
So in some of those sites, um, and this may be too specific, but one of those sites is um. The Fairfax Market site. So, and it's not clear to me that looking at. The intent there, the possibility that it's looking at. Doing housing in lieu of a market.
Right, so with with that, in that case, that particular site, they're not um, so. The the finding is that the existing uses are not a not an impediment to redevelopment with housing as as. Projected or proposed. In the case of the Fairfax Market, that's a pipeline project. Uh, there is a uh, an application that's that's coming to build um eight, eleven units?
Yeah, there there was a pre-app. I would I would call it, we held a pre-application with them just to discuss a plan to build eight units, which would be. Residential over commercial, but it would be in the parking lot. So it the market would continue. So that's, I guess that's an example of how that. Finding could be met with that particular project.
Right, and so the the but the existing use that's being discontinued is a portion of the parking lot. It's not the not the market itself that would continue with being, it's just that the housing would be added to the site. And a a portion of the of the parking lot would be discontinued in its current use as a parking lot and redeveloped with housing. And that 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 existing use, that parking lot is not uh an undue impediment to. The the vision of the property owner to put housing in its place. That's what the findings are making.
Okay, um. Those were the questions that I had when we look at um. And we'll get. To the discussion piece of this. Uh, I'm glad that you brought up the comment on the draft. E I R, E I R. You know, because it is concerning that there are. Things in there that seem to be an error. But they're noted tonight. Um, the assumption would be that what comes out tomorrow. Would fix some of those errors or address some of the concerns that have been noted tonight. Um, when we look at. The E I R, there's. A lot of times in E I R is for. A project, right? Like a building somewhere. This E I R is is for the housing element. And we really don't know when we look at. This cycle, the reality of. What we will look like eight years from now, nine years from now, you know, there's concerns that. In there, you know, the the comments about a robust evacuation plan. Comments that. Putting. One thousand. Adding one thousand individuals to the town. With these units is going to reduce traffic. It's going to reduce the amount of cars that we have in town. I don't know how realistic an assumption that is from experience being in this town. Um, so there are concerns that are valid from the community about evacuations. But again, when we go back and look at, this isn't a fixed. Building, this isn't a fixed project for one unit that we know has some certainty. As being. Created. We're doing the program of the housing element that we're addressing with the E I R and none of us know. Where we will be with this housing element. Eight years from now, you know, how successful we will be in actually building or meeting. These requirements um. So I think. As far as the E I R. Knowing that we can recommend based on a draft. We've discussed. Issues with. The E I R, what we found in there, we know that. I believe those are going to be taken into consideration or have already been taken into consideration, the comments. Um, for for a final that will go to the council. That I could recommend on the E I R. Approving the resolution for the E I R. And approving the resolution for the housing element. We did get changes to the housing element. I can. Say that I have read the entire thing and I've got binders down here with the hard copies with the sticky notes. On them um. So. I could go ahead and recommend. Approval of both of the resolutions. So any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanna. How I would like to frame it for myself, and I just want to share that with the commission and the public um. Listening to the comments that we get, I think I understand most of those um, and and I actually do agree with some of them. That's not entirely what we're doing here. Uh, to give an example, right? Any any property that is identified in this document that could be developed. That doesn't mean it has to be developed. We don't know if it will be developed. And conversely, any property that is not in here could easily be developed and under the same conditions if that works out to be so. Um, whether or not that's possible, uh, high construction costs, uh, 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 rent control, there's many reasons that play in that whole thing. But it's important to understand that that's not the purpose of this document. It's just to. Be able to make a convincing case to the state that according to this plan, you could reach that number that they're looking for. That's only what it is. And and other than making some modifications to the zoning code to make that easier. There are, we are not really actually changing much. Tomorrow Fairfax is still the same. Um, whether or not these developments can occur, if there's many economic reasons, we don't know. Um, talking to people, um, will find out some of them actually will not do what they thought they were gonna do, and others might build twice as much. We we don't know that yet. We'll adjust it in the future. And so in so within that framework. And understanding that we do have these red lines, we do have those comments. Um, so in my mind, I have a good overview of everything that's in here and. Um, based on that and based on knowing where we are in the time, I mean, we've gone a long way. It was hard with the third planning director. We even had a period without a planning director. It was COVID. Uh, many of the on on the council here are new. I mean, it's been a stumbling effort to get here, but we made it to here. And I think that deadline is realistic in the sense that we must pass this on. Bring it out of commission and submit it to the state so that we retain full control of what's happening here. Um, and so the combination of those two elements that we are not. We're not fundamentally changing anything we're doing in Fairfax. The same discussion continues. Um, and there's going to be another desalant use element that come that will bring back this whole discussion, including about one of the largest lot that we have in town. So that's an ongoing effort. Knowing that and knowing that we have to achieve this goal, I would concur with the chair and I would be willing to recommend this for approval. That's my logic. I just share that with the other commissioners.
Yeah, I I I thanks for your comments and and you know, I think um, so again, I'm a newer commissioner catching up on the process. But I, it seems pretty clear that the risk of not moving forward of further delaying. Uh, our our recommendation to uh to council. Carries a greater risk than what would I perceive coming from the public comments in terms of negative impacts, unavoidable impacts. You know, to me, uh, there I I was just reading, there's thirty-four builders remedy projects throughout the Bay Area. That is like a total loss of control. Right? And there's one in Santa Rafael is is just coming on in, and I don't think this community is going to be. You know, pleased if if we can't move fast enough and do our job as commissioners to really keep this process moving to the point where we avoid. Uh, you know, some some of those um loss of control due to builders remedy. So I I I concur. I despite, I think the challenges and flaws and the the complexity of these documents, uh. I feel like it's important to keep the process moving. I would say I I would like to to um. Uh, to implore or or add to my, you know, to to the comments here with the recommendation that. We do more as a community, as planning commission, hopefully as as to to this is a message to the council as well. To reduce the significant unavoidable impacts by investigating further. Things like parking demand management and non motorized transportation incentives. As I mentioned before, we have a plan. We need to implement that bike and ped master plan. So to reduce the significant unavoidable impacts, but I think again, just the risk of not taking action is greater than moving forward tonight. So I support. Uh, uh, Commissioner Swift's recommendation to to kind of move this forward tonight.
Yep, uh, thanks. I want to, you know, I agree with with what we've already heard and sort of echo. With a little more specifics, um, what Commissioner Jansen said in terms of. I think we all agree with a lot of the concerns that the public has made, like specifically. The seriousness of wildfire risk and evacuation concerns, the issue with. Property owners sort of being at a loss if um private insurers decide not to insure homes in the town uh because of of wildfire risk. Um, and you know, when thinking about reasons why we would or would not recommend um the town council adopt. The specific um housing elements are just thinking about how that plays in for me. The risk of. Of not adopting them. You know, as we've heard builders remedies, other things, we I don't see a sort of a protection. There's not, we're not more insulated. From development that increases the dangers of wildfire risk by not adapt by by rejecting this. I don't see how. Um, how that how a rejection would would help mitigate that very real and serious risk. Um, whereas instead, to the extent that we stay in compliance and move along with the process, I think we have at least. Even if it's only marginal, a better ability to address those those concerns. Um, you know, I on another countywide commission, I agree and have made the point many times about. Um, the frustration I have with how um low income, extremely low income, moderate income um categories are defined countywide even. Um, but certainly specifically um as applies to Fairfax. And I think to the extent that the town has that inclusionary zoning and linkage fee, I think that's a that's a concept. That this commission suggested the town recommend future when when creating that um. Affordable housing fund and and sort of prioritizing focusing on some of the more low end um income categories, because that's where we can say we want to use. The inclusionary zoning um linkage fee to support. Things at the bottom end, things that would be affordable to people on a fixed income earning forty, forty-five thousand dollars a year. You know, uh. Public access, I you know, we get, we got all the comments like, like people said, um, you know, I think it's, it was a helpful and good. Recent change of the town council to um put those public comments on the public agendas after the deadline to make them. You know, I know to me, that's a a town council um sort of controlled process. And so. You know, I I would ask here and and encourage you to also ask to the town council that they. Adopt that policy to the extent feasible for all the other town commissions to make sure that public comments sent to those commissions also get submitted to the. Clerk to post on the website so that they're available to everybody to review without having to specifically request them after the after the fact. Um, I I think that would be helpful. Um. I I have one sort of tweak to the to the resolutions to make in the um. E I R one and just sort of in a use of of a defined term in the um. Section two of the resolution um. Where we say in accordance with the requirements of SEQA, the planning commissions reviewed and considered information contained in the D E I R. And then it says the commission finds that the E I R was prepared in compliance with SEQA. Is there any reason why that shouldn't be D E I R as that's what we've reviewed? And so our finding is based on that. And then we can still, you know. Recommend that the town council certified the E I R upon completion of the final E I R.
Can you repeat that? Are you asking that the second set say that we that we, yeah?
Yeah.
So um, what that says is that commission finds that the E I R was prepared in compliance with SEQA. So. The E I R is the whole document, both in its draft form and then in its final form. And you have seen the draft, you've also seen the comments. And we talked about the responses to comments. And so procedurally, the E I R has been prepared in compliance with SEQA. When the responses to the comments have been uh published and put out, which are coming out tomorrow. So um. you, I think the commission has enough information to find that the EIR process has been followed in accordance with CEQA. And I think that's what it's, what it's saying. So, once that's done, you, your recommendation to the council is that council, the document that will come before you is the final EIR, and that's the one we recommend that you go ahead and certify.
Got it. Um, and then I assume, so, so then to that extent with section four, it's sort of be uh, sort of a public records, kind of a savings, because it says everything in the record of proceedings, there's some record of everything we've had to look at, you know, I just,
Yes.
Personally, you know, don't wanna, so that we're all comfortable that we're only saying that we've reviewed what's, what we've reviewed, um, and we can make our findings and assumptions based off of, of that specifically and nobody.
Yes.
Okay.
Everything.
Okay. Then, yeah, I'm, I also think, um, we, we are well situated to, to proceed.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Should we have a, and on the motion, let's start with twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, the EIR one. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. Uh, motion to approve the planning commission resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two. So, resolution of the planning commission of the town of Fairfax recommending the town council to certify an EIR report and make certain findings as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, in connection with the approval of general plan amendment adopting an update of the housing element for the period of twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we have a vote?
Okay. Bela?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Motion, Rezo carries. Um, so the next Rezo is the housing element, Rezo twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Do we have a motion on that?
Uh, I'd like a motion on that.
You go.
Plan Commission Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Fairfax recommending the Town Council adopt a general plan amendment to update the housing element for the period of twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one and affirmatively further fair housing and comply with state's housing element law.
We have a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Bela?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for the public comments. Can we have, can we take a five-minute break? Great, thanks.
Recording stopped.
So we're gonna go ahead and continue and go to
Recording in progress.
Item three, discussion item training.
Yeah, this is just a, just a short item to mention that there is two potential training opportunities kind of coming up specifically for planning commissioners. And there's the first one, I don't really have much information on yet because SSU, uh, hasn't really put it together. Uh, they tend to be last minute on this particular conference, but it, it is specifically a planning commissioner conference and they are probably gonna have it in, as early as February. Um, and generally it's a one, it's a one-day conference. It occurs on a, on a Saturday in Ronan Park. So since I used to work for Ronan Park, I, I went to it pretty much every year. And it's, it's pretty good. They generally have a good summary of the new CEQA laws that are out. And then also, um, they'll have a special topic. And in fact, one, one year, um, someone from Andrew's, an attorney from Andrew's firm was there and I, I think she was one of the speakers on, on sign codes, for example. So they'll kind of have a different topic, different main topic every year, but they generally will always have the, the CEQA summary. So that's a good local one. That's very low cost and you can kind of just go for the day.
And if I can just jump in on that one, um, low cost and, you know, the town will take care of that, but it is, um, I've been to those, they're good, they're one day. They also, because they're local, can address and have information for local issues. You know, and, and my perspective is any conference or training that you can get in this area is, is useful as we go forward. So.
Yep, exactly. And then the second one is in March, um. I don't have the exact dates. I think it's six, I just looked it up. So I think it's March sixth to eighth, I believe, which generally kind of overlaps a weekend. And this is, uh, this one is the League of Cities Planning Commissioner, um, Conference, and it's, it's really good. I've, I haven't been to it in several years, but I, I did go to one. And it's very thorough and it kind of goes through, you know, like ethics training, brown neck training, CEQA, kind of nuts and bolts of planning commissioner work. Um, and the, and the, and the town is willing, I, I did discuss this with the city manager. And, and there is some money in the budget to send. Maybe not everybody, but, but there is money in the budget to send planning commissioners if you're really interested. It is a big investment in time, you know, you have to go down there for basically two to three days and, and stay and go to all the conference sessions. So that's something to think about. So if the planning commission is, if planning, a planning commissioner or two are interested in going to that, or if you're all interested in going to that, we could maybe spread it out over a couple of years. So um, so just, just let me know if you are interested and maybe we could poll people after this, after this meeting and, and find out who's interested. I, I, I'm pretty sure it's March sixth to eighth, but I can, I can verify that. And, um, and maybe I can send out an email tomorrow that has more of a description on it. It's down in Long Beach, in Southern California.
And, and normally what, it's the Planning Commissioners Academy, so it's broken out with tracks for new commissioners. Um, but then also addresses, um, current issues. There'll be somebody that addresses current legislation. Um, CEQA presentation, so they're really good. Normally they've done them. Um, they would do them like one year in Southern California, one year in Northern California. The last year was Southern California and this one's Southern California too, so I'm not sure what's up with that. And it would be helpful and I have the links. You can also go online and see prior year PowerPoints, which is helpful to get some training or background if folks can't go.
Yeah, so I can, I can follow up tomorrow and send, send a link to all that information. So you can all take a look and then you can just let, let, let us know if you're interested and we can. And then we, I think we're way ahead of the game on both of those. So just wanted to bring it up before the new years to get an idea about that training. So. So that's all I got.
Okay, next item is minutes. Are there any corrections on the minutes for September twenty-first? And October twelfth? If there's no corrections or changes, can we have a motion?
Motion approved to, uh, motion to approve the meeting minutes from September and October.
Second.
A quick friendly amendment, is there a third month? I think there was, we had August minutes.
October nineteenth. You guys don't have October nineteenth in your packets.
I think there's three, but there's two of the same months, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. So three sets of minutes?
Yeah, so I, September and October, I captured them all three.
All right.
Very nice. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Bela?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Mincer approved. Okay, going on to Commissioner comments and requests. I've got a couple questions or, or comments. One of the, and maybe this would come out of the planning director's report, but one of the questions I had was, when are we gonna see the safety element? There's nothing online, at least for a draft. So I wanted to get some information on what we see and there looked like there was an addition on the slide that perhaps hadn't been updated on what I downloaded for, um, the rest of the housing related schedule. So.
Yeah, the safety element, I think we were ambitiously planning to have that kind of go along with all of this work we're doing on the housing element, but then we figured out that we could wait until February to start. So we'll be, we'll be working on that in February and March.
You know, and going back to the start of this whole process, you know, one of the things that, you know, commissioners were concerned about was, you know, the safety element should um, impact the housing element, right? So we haven't done any work on it um, since before. Um, so I know there's interest on, on looking at that. Um, and I know there's requirements to be added to that from the state related to wildfire and evacuation. So I think that's important to work on. Soon, since we're already at this housing element piece.
Yeah, I can, I can ask Andrew tomorrow if there's a way we can kind of accelerate that now that we're have the housing element kind of under control. Maybe we could move it up a little bit. The other thing I will say is there's also this, um, county effort, which I haven't, I haven't been involved at here in Marin, but I wasn't pretty heavily involved in Sonoma. There's, um, the local hazard mitigation plan, which is also underway, which also deals with some of the, the same issues. And so that's being worked on through our public works department. So.
Right, because we're plugged into the county
Yeah.
one, which is being worked on. Um, also in the housing, the HCD comments that I read through, one of them was, um, a reminder or a for your information Fairfax, there are other elements of the general plan that are triggered by the housing element. So can you identify what those other ones are that besides the safety element that we need to be working on? I know down the road, but I, the conservation one, but I don't think that's triggered.
Mostly the land use, it's the land use element and the safety element are the two.
All right.
Yeah. And I, I, if I'm forgetting one, I apologize. Well, I'm pretty sure that those are the two most significant ones. Yeah.
Okay, so upcoming schedule, which it seems that the slide had gone beyond January. So I don't know if the plan is to update the website with that, that we can just bring that whole thing down. And then the comment, um, by Commissioner on what the council does now. And I think I may have asked this question previously. Um, I noticed that the council is, is adding their public comments they get to the online agendas section, um, for council meetings. So I think that's great. And I think it's something that I agree that the planning commission should be doing as well. I don't know what, um, the council's kind of timeframe is, like would they set a timeframe to say any comments that we get by this time, this date, we have the ability to post them. Um, or not, but, um, I think that's important for the planning commission as well to do and look at doing. And then my last question is related to, since we're coming up on a new northern spotted owl nesting season. Do we have current mapping and current information from the county, um, that we're assured that whatever maps we have now are current in relation to that going forward for the nesting season?
We are attempting to get that information and we wrote to Point Blue and they, they sent us their noticing list that they use to send out their letters to people that are within a quarter mile of the nesting sites, but they did not give us a map. So we're, we're, we put an email into Marin County Parks, right, to see if they will give us a new map or if there even is an updated map, right? We're still waiting to hear. So we're in the process of trying to, trying to get a map. If there is one, they may not have updated it. They do these surveys and I went back in my emails and I did get one map where they had identified, they put a pink dot on a map right near Cypress and Madrone, right? Where they said there's a non-nesting couple there. So it's not a nesting site, but yes, owls have been seen there because I have an upcoming project that's near Cypress. And I was thinking, you know, this map hasn't changed for years, right? So we're in the process of trying to wrestle that out of somebody.
Okay.
If it exists, we don't know whether they've updated the map.
Well, and that would be the question and, and going to, um, the county parks would be a good idea and into that one site. That is an area that would be within a quarter mile, that location, um.
They specifically said it is not a nesting group. It's not a nesting couple. And I guess that, you know,
Right.
Right? I don't know.
I can send pictures of this year's owl lets. Um, so it is important, I think, to
So those should probably go to Point Blue because they're the, aren't they the ones that do the?
I don't know who makes the map, but if we can track that down and make sure that whatever we use is, is current. I appreciate that.
And I have to tell you that I, I, I've worked here a lot of years and we were unable, nobody ever gave us a map until, uh, Ben Berto started, right? And it's because he knew somebody at Marin Park and, uh, nobody would give us a map. I find it very strange. So what we're gonna do, we send an email to Marin Parks, but if we don't get an answer, we're gonna schedule appointment. You can't drop in anymore. The park, the department's closed unless you make an appointment. And we will ask them, why can a jurisdiction in, in your county not get a map? Not get the secret map?
Thank you.
Oh, and they might, there's a chance they might wanna keep it confidential, but anyway.
Yeah, then, I mean, the map, my understanding is, is, you know, the mapping is for staff use.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Don't have the map. Yes, they do.
That's all the, um, comments that I had. Go.
Yeah, I have one. Um, I wanna cycle back to one of the public comments from very beginning, uh, regarding the two ways out of a site. So I think that was a reference to the California Fire Code, whether or not that would be um, incorporated in the Town of Fairfax code. Um, considering the big concern about, uh, the wildlife and fire situation, that seems like a good idea to me. Is that something that is being explored? Is that something that is on the list of things to do? Um, what's the status on that?
I made a note to investigate that because I have, I have no idea. Um, but yeah, I know, I know there, I know that we can adopt certain portions of the building code as optionally, you're kind of the same concept as we did with tiny homes. So I will, I'll follow up with our building official and, and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
And, and one of the additions And, and one of the additions to the safety element, um, related to the recent fires is that the safety element has to identify those housing areas that don't have two ways in and out. So, um, there's going to be a long list in that safety element.
It's a very complicated thing, but it's good to, by adopting it, if you do anything that's being developed new, it must be considered. That's the point.
Any new subdivision, right?
New subdivision or certain thresholds for new developments or uh, just addition of houses, like the end of cascade is probably something that might not work, but for good reasons.
Any other, um, commissioner comments or requests of staff? Okay. Do we have a planning director's report?
Oh, I have no additional information to share at this time.
All right. Um, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all.